I will read a couple of notices and call the meeting to order. Girdwood Board of Supervisors Committee's subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Group and Meetings Act as found Alaska Statute 4462.310, and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25, public meetings operate under the Girdwood standard of conduct. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. My name is Mike Edgerton, co-chair, and I will ask my fellow co-chair to read the Valdi document.
The Girdwood Board of Supervisors acknowledges the indigenous peoples of Alaska, whose land we reside on. The community of Girdwood, situated in a community area known to be Denaina, an Aleutic homeland, respects the people who were stewards of this land for generations. We commit to the continued stewardship of this land and are grateful to be a part of a wider community that seeks to make a sustainable use of Girdwood Valley for Highland and Seminole peoples.
Thank you. Our staff to do a roll call, please.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Here.
Brian Burnett.
Here.
Jennifer Wingard.
Here.
Thank you. And Mike Edgerton.
Here.
We've heard from Kelly O'Conneck, she may be arriving a little bit late.
Yeah, we'll, we'll mention when she gets here. Okay, any disclosures anyone wants to make now? No one's do so when we hear. Not seeing any. Quick announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand, wait to be acknowledged, and that's either in room or online. And help discussion stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other moments of the public. Keep comments focused on the business under discussion, and please be respectful of everyone's opinions. So first thing we'll do is I seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move to approve tonight's agenda?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Amendments, based on an email from earlier, an item for new business for spare permits.
Okay. We have it seconded.
Second.
Thank you. Would you want to say anything more about that?
Probably it's time to say it. Here it is, new business, we could add number 14.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment to add forest fair to new business? Not hearing any, I'll do this by consent, any objection to that change? Not hearing any objection. I think there was one other potential issue as well. Item 13, which is a sort of small technical change, we can talk about that later. Comment to do on 14 for our next meeting, but I believe after the next land use meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so we could potentially act on this tonight, so I would suggest considering moving that to the last item of old business. So 13, go after 10.
I still move.
Okay, so second. Right, so just to clarify, we move item 13 to the end of old business, so we could potentially act on it tonight. It's still delayed if we wish. Any objection or any further comment on that? Any objection to that change? No? Okay, so that amendment is passed, so unless there's any more discussion on the agenda as a whole, I think we're ready to, we're ready to approve the agenda as amended. I will do so again by consent. Does anyone have assent? Does anyone have any objections to approving the amended agenda? Not seeing or hearing any, the agenda is approved. Okay, we will now go on to minutes approval from February the 24th. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 24th?
Move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you. So we've seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes from the 24th of February? Not hearing any, again, I'll do this by assent, so those minutes are approved. Next, we just have one item on consent agenda, these are generally items that we are just going to, in this case, we're just going to issue a non-objection, so it's an acknowledgement that GBOS is aware of this action, you don't have any specific comments on it. This is a short plot that's occurring on the upper part of the document. I think it's in the packet if anyone's interested. Details? Again, I would entertain a motion to accept everything on the, or approve everything on the consent agenda.
A motion to approve everything on consent agenda.
Thank you. Jennifer, go ahead. You want a second? Right, so now Jennifer, go ahead.
Oh. I just wanted to say, I, I've brought this up before, but I don't really understand why we're passing these as non-objections when we haven't really heard them at all or know anything about them. It just seems to me like, and we've talked about this before, I don't understand the problem with just leaving them as is, we're not required to comment on these, so I, I have a problem with us essentially rubber stamping something we've never looked at or talked about.
Okay, so I'm going to assume we're not going to get consent of the consent agenda?
Correct.
I guess the, I'll, I'll respond briefly to your comment. I think, I understand that point, not commenting on it has the same impact, so not commenting or giving a non-objection has exactly the same impact. I think we have a responsibility to be aware of what's happening and to pay attention to the, to the, to these applications and read them in the package, et cetera. So again, there's an opportunity here to bring it up and discuss. So if you want to have a discussion on this item, I think that's completely reasonable, Jennifer, or if not, we can move on to a vote on the consent agenda.
Actually, just to clarify, I'm not saying that we haven't looked at it, I'm saying that as a board, we haven't looked at or talked about it, so making a board decision about it just strikes me as problematic, particularly if somebody wants to come back later and say, hey, what about this development? And they say, oh, GBOS didn't object. If GBOS didn't comment at all, it's a different thing than passing it on our consent agenda, so I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with it, I understand the whole point behind it, consent agenda, in fact, I think I was the one who suggested it, but I don't understand this item on consent agendas.
Okay. Didn't sound like we were bringing this up as a new topic to discuss, so I think we're at the point where there's a vote on the table now. So would you like to do a roll call vote?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan.
Yes.
Brian Burnett.
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard.
No.
Mike Edgerton.
Yes.
That motion passes 3-1.
Thank you. I think we, we should discuss this further when we come to rules and procedures, perhaps not tonight, but in the work session on that. Okay, moving on to presentations, item number one, legislative. I see Senator Geisler is here. Would you like to go ahead, Senator?
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, so Senator Kathy Geisler here, I'm going to start with local, a local topic. I have been having email exchanges with the Department of Transportation Aviation Division at the request of folks related to parcel H at the airport being given a lease. And the first letter I sent, I got back kind of a non-response from the commissioner, and I'm not being disrespectful, the commissioner actually liked him a lot, but on this subject, he didn't actually respond to the concerns that I was expressing on behalf of the residents along that area. So over the weekend, Camilla Seifert sent me the Girdwood Airport Plan, and so I extracted pieces from that that point out that helicopter activity is supposed to be at the other far end of the airport, according to the, the airport plan. So that was the letter that I sent today, we'll see what kind of response we get back. I am concerned that this helicopter lease, it's, I, I don't even know the company, so it has nothing to do with the individual company, to me, it's a, it's a life safety issue. Putting a helicopter pad that close to a residential area seems very imprudent. So that's the local issue. On the statewide issue, we did decline the formation of the Department of Agriculture last week. I voted no to the executive order creating a Department of Agriculture, not because they don't like agriculture, in fact, I like it a lot, it's just that the administration was not able to articulate a mission vision and goals for this new department, and so we do have a piece of legislation, we will be crafting it with those kinds of specifics in mind. The budget, of course, is the big deal right now, the operating budget. The House has a version that has the same deficit that we're looking at for this year, and that's $172 million, but going forward, the House uses the dividend as the moderator of the budget deficit. So globally, the statement can be made that we will have a significant budget deficit going forward, all things staying equal. We are looking for reductions in the budget, that's pretty hard to do, because the main places that we spend is on education and healthcare, both of which are formula-driven and pretty, pretty difficult to cut. In fact, education is the thing we're hoping to increase this year. But in any case, the Senate budget will have a half a million dollars deficit the, the coming two years, maintaining a dividend of $1,400. The House, on the other hand, will have a $50 million, that's five zero million, deficit with a dividend of $570 this coming October, the following October, $576, and the third year out, $310 dividend. So you can see, they use the dividend amount as the moderator of the deficit. $50 million is a manageable amount, this assumes, of course, no change in oil production, no change in oil price. We are estimating oil price next year to be $68 a barrel. I have seen Bloomberg estimating actually low to mid 60s, so we may have overshot a bit on our euphoric expiration, expectations on oil price. We are looking at new revenue. My office, my Senate Resources Committee, is carrying a tax that would levy a tax on S corporations that are engaged in oil and gas development and make more than $5 million a year in, in profit. We estimate that that will bring in about $150 million in revenue per year. We also have proposed an internet sales tax, so this would not tax citizens who engage in internet sales, it would tax companies like Amazon. Other states do this, it doesn't change anything about what the price of the products are online, it would generate about $25 to $65 million in revenue. So those are kind of the main things, the main taxes that I see as viable in any case. We are working with the House to attempt to reach consensus on revenue measures and also how we might balance this year's budget, paying the additional cost even for this year's budget, which is, which is about $200 million. It's about $175 million, but we have additional employee contracts coming in, they're being negotiated right now, and putting in a little extra for fire suppression for this coming summer, it kind of rounds out to be about $200 million. We believe we could prudently take that from the savings account, our constitutional budget reserve. So I will stop there, happy to answer any questions, thanks so much for letting me share.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I have one quick question. The internet sales tax, you said it would affect companies like Amazon, would it just affect, would it also have a threshold on the size of the company, or would that affect small companies that are also selling across the internet?
There is no, there's no minimum income, no, it affects all internet sales.
Okay, then we can find more about that at AKLE.
Sure, and these are, these are companies located outside the state of Alaska.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Any other questions from the audience, committee? Let's do.
Not really a comment, probably not a question, but a comment, Senator Geisler, my name's Steve Halverson. We just want to thank you, there's 99 folks supporting our letter for that parcel H, just wanted to thank you for the work that you're doing on that, we appreciate it.
You're very welcome, I don't mean to be negative, but I have limited expectation about a positive outcome here, just because the aviation division at DOT is pretty much a dynasty and they do whatever they want, but that, that airport plan was super helpful and had good comments in it that I could then send to the, the commissioner, the, the Department of Transportation itself commissioned that report from an engineering firm here in Alaska. Now, it was in 2005, but regardless, those safety, those safety issues still exist, so I'm hopeful, but at the same time, I won't be shocked if we don't make any headway, but we'll keep trying.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, really quick, Senator Geisler, I just also wanted to thank you for your time and effort on all of the communication with the residents and our board and always coming to our meetings and on to the airport parcel, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. I can't see the full, it's attendees online, but it's, do we have our representative, Kai? Kai holding on?
He said you'd call in later. Okay, yes, conflict, he has a meeting right now.
So we'll move to assembly members, I see both Randy and Zach on, so whoever would like to go first?
I'll let Randy go first and then kind of pick up any, any gaps.
Okay.
Or any additional information.
All right, good evening, everyone, calling to you from beautiful Valdez, Alaska, great day here, kind of sunny. So I'm sort of in lame duck mode, I have two, roughly two more assembly meetings to go, one on the 8th and one on the 22nd, which I'll be at half of that meeting as they swear in the need members after certification of the election. I'm still at Colade's every Saturday on Industrial Way, just off of Huffman, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. A couple items that I'm working on here at the end, one around nitrous oxide, or whipits or huffs, working with the police chief just to provide another tool in their quiver on how those are sold, to make sure they're sold and used for their, their intended purpose, and then working on revising dimensional standards for solar access for Townscare Park. I will be in Girdwood this Friday, we're doing a little press on Little Bears for all the hard work that Girdwood and Little Bears has done with the ARPA funds, so great success story there. And a couple things that went through the last assembly meeting, we have before us the ASD picture capital and annual operating budget, those got postponed, so we have not acted on those, but those are coming forward. We introduced AO 2025-40 that creates two new rezoning processes and includes rezoning processes initiated by the municipality. We also approved AO 2025-19, that's a single application process for all municipal services, really great idea coming from members of Alatell, one application puts you in the queue with your basic information for all mini services that we offer, trying to streamline things. We did also approve AO 2024-114, better known as a Girdwood Area Plan. In that plan, we had Amendment 1 and Amendment 2 that were approved, Amendment 3 was not. I know everyone has mixed feelings on the amendment, some compromise with the planning department, and I'll let Zach speak further on a really great amendment he has to the Heritage Land Bank Plan, which is the right place for that amendment that we couldn't do here, but really tries to shore things up and stay in alignment with what Girdwood wants versus just denying the area plan and voting it down. Also, AO 2024-105, project Anchorage sales tax, that did fail, so we, there may be some work still going on that by other members to help revitalize Anchorage, I don't know if it'll be a sales tax or whatever they plan to do, but look forward to seeing something in that line. Just one last thing on bonds, so your pamphlet from the League of Women Voters, the last page, really good information about bonds. Currently, we have for general obligation bonds, we have about $464 million, $413 million for ASD, or total outstanding of 878. Now, what that also doesn't include is 151 million of bonds that have been approved but have not been issued, they could be issued at any time. So again, we're retiring 38 million, so if we were to approve every bond on the ballot and also issue every bond, which is typically unlikely that we issue all the bonds immediately, we would have a net debt service change of about $3 million. And I know for Girdwood, I think it's Prop 8, so really trying to get the word out to Anchorage residents that that is a Girdwood bond initiative and we just need to lend our support, but they will not be paying for that bond, if I have the right number. So hopefully trying to get that passed for Girdwood. And then also, I shared with Mike and a few others, there's also a levy option, I know Girdwood bonds, as well as Eagle River bonds, have a hard time getting approved, because they do require that vote by Anchorage, and I'll say Anchorage maybe doesn't read all the text, but levies are a way that might work for Girdwood to help get some projects that you want to see completed. And with that, I will stop and turn over to Zach.
Good catch, thank you, Randy. Yeah, I don't think I have too much to add, that was, that was a great update. I will mention for the, the Heritage Land Bank, we believe that will be introduced, I think, at the first meeting in April, so that work is coming up here soon. Randy mentioned I have one amendment that I'm planning to, to bring forward, some of the things I put in there, or intend to be responsive to some feedback I got from the community. Once we have that kind of out there and then socialized, certainly interested in having more conversations around what we do with the HLB work plan. On those, well, and I'm not sure if this could be applicable to Girdwood, but there may be a community interest. We did pass, I think it was in the form of a resolution, but we designated a area in South Anchorage here as a secure trash zone, it was a request we got from the community because of bears getting into trash, and basically it mandates that people will have trash containers that are, if not bear-proof, bear-secure, so if there's an area, another area that's interested in pursuing that, let us know, happy to try and work with you on it. Let's see, I think Randy mentioned that we're taking up the school budget at a special meeting, what, one little piece of color I'll add to that is during our joint meeting with the Anchorage School Board, they presented their budget, they're the ones that, that crafted, and then traditionally, the, the assembly just provides an up or down vote on, on the budget they prepared. They have one version of the budget that's based on the existing BSA, and Lays has some pretty extensive cuts they'd have to make to program sports, increasing the pupil teacher ratio, things of that nature. They then also prepared another version of that budget to, to say how the money would be allocated if, if the legislature increases the BSA, and I think they're working off a, what was it, $1,000 per student estimate. The question has been asked, can the assembly do something similar where we take up the budget as, as based on current funding levels, and then also one that would go into effect if, if the funding is increased, and I believe that's still an open question, but it may be, may come up on the meeting April 2nd, Randy might have know more about that. We're also going to have another special meeting the following week regarding the Port of Alaska Modernization Project, there'll be three pieces to look at there. One, we'll be talking about approving the contract for construction of Terminal 1. We have, we, we know we've received more than one bid, the administration's currently reviewing the bids and scoring them and going through the negotiation process, so hopefully at that meeting, we'll have a contract to review and approve. There are also two agreements there relating to the large cargo cranes that are used to move the cargo from ship to shore for one style of container ships, and then also we'll probably have to look at increasing the bond authority as part of the, the finance program, and happy to expand on that stuff if anyone's curious, but I also know sometimes people start to fall asleep when we start talking about port stuff. Let's see, in other news, hopefully most folks are aware that we are anticipating interruption from Mount Spur. Take a look at the information on how to be prepared for that, certainly recommend folks get ahead of that. Also, the woodlot, the woodlots will be free, I put free in quotes because nothing's really free, there's still costs associated with our operation, but there will not be a fee for using the woodlots this summer, and the one at the central transfer station down in South Anchorage will be opening up on May 1st. And then finally, I'll just add, for the municipal election, the voting center's open tomorrow, and that is also the deadline to request a replacement ballot, and I'll go ahead and pause there, and of course, happy to answer questions.
Any questions from the board? I've got just a couple of quick comments. Firstly, again, thank you, thank you very much, Zach, for all your work getting the comprehensive plan through. I know there was a lot, a lot to carry for at the end, and thank you, Randy, for all your work on the sales tax, I know it didn't pass, but there was a lot of really good work that went behind that, and I think it started a big conversation. And, oh yeah, secure track regulation zones actually originated in Girdwood, that's where they came from originally, so we were the first place, I think Glenobbs was the third. Thank you. I think that's it. Any other questions from the community? Thank you very much. Well, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you, Randy, for your vote on the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, I appreciated you standing up for what Girdwood asked for, thank you.
Bryce?
Thank you, Chair, yeah, I appreciate Jen's comments there, I appreciate the vote Randy made, and I was just curious, Zach, you know, I, this is not meant to be rude, but I'm just curious as to kind of how you can justify, you know, supporting or, you know, proposing and supporting an amendment that your constituents overwhelmingly disagree with and then act like it's a success, so I'm quite, I'm quite disappointed, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I, certainly, I'm sure we could talk about this at length, and if you want to find another time to chat about it, Bryce, shoot me a text or an email, I'd be happy to talk to you more about it. You know, I, I think most of, of kind of went into that, I, I said on the record, I'll just add here that one experience I have from Holton Hills is that sometimes these things move forward whether you want to be a part of that conversation or not, I did not support Holton Hills, I didn't think it was a good project, and so I did not get that engaged in trying to steer it or guide it, and it passed anyways. When it comes to this piece of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, I'll say, and then, you know, granted, this is somewhat of a guessing game, that something is going to move forward there, whether we participate in that process or not directly, and so being mindful of that, it was my goal to say, if it is going to happen, what is the roadmap we want to lay out to ensure that if there is ultimately some development on that property, that as much as it can, we try and steer it in a way that it addresses some community needs. I know that's not going to be a satisfying answer for a lot of people, again, I'm happy to talk to folks more about it. One thing I do want to remind people about is this is, you know, one step in a long process, an ultimate, you know, an authorization to dispose of the land from the HLB inventory to a developer, probably won't happen until after 2030, and between now and then, there's work to do in the HLB work plan to, to lay out some additional parameters or constraints, and then also, most importantly, sometime probably after I'm gone from the assembly, to, to talk to the members then when they actually contemplate the, the sale of the land.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in here real quick, we're always faced with really tough decisions, and, and together with planning and zoning and Girdwood, we went through a lot of the proposed amendments, discarded some, brought some forward, the Mitten and Virgin Creek were the two tough ones, I think, and I, I was probably, I was a yes on the Mitten, and I'll get into that in a second. I think Zach has crafted a very good amendment to HLB, which is the right place to put it, hopefully it's gonna, it's gonna, that will pass and that'll make. Hopefully it's gonna, it's gonna, that will pass and that'll make protect that area further. To maintain what Gerwood wants yet allow some development. And then I'll speak to, you know, I was a yes, and it's just the power of Gerwood and never give up the fight and. Coming down to the Assembly. So honestly, it was, when we came back from dinner, I went out in the audience, saw Paul Cruz, saw Nick Cruz. Sorry, Gabby Markle's mom. And just had a good conversation with your representatives from Gerwood that that really put me in the right place at the very end. So again, never stop advocating to the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we'll move on to scoreboard. I don't see anyone from the scoreboard. Okay, move on to H L B Advisory Commission. Don't know if Tim's on. I don't think so. Okay, thank you everyone. We'll now move on to supervisor reports. Go along with.
I do not have a report and she buzzes on.
Okay, thank you.
For Gerwood Trails Committee, we will be at the next meeting starting reviewing the document. About the R F P for the park planning.
Okay, right. So if you've got probably four, four under three, but that's fine.
Oh, sorry.
We'll do two or three together. Jennifer?
Yes, thank you. We have another H L B A C meeting coming up on March twenty seventh, one thirty. That has not got anything specific to Gerwood to it, but they are going to be talking about. A RV park in Anchorage. And so I just thought some people who are interested in seeing something like that in Gerwood. Might be interested in that conversation. And then I also wanted to mention that at the past H L B A C meeting. I did speak to the points that G B O S had already made about. Development about the Mitten because there was a proposed amendment from H L B. That made it look like it was going to be disposed of regardless, and maybe at this point it's a moot point, but I just wanted people to know we did speak up. And let them know what we thought of that. And that's my whole report, I think.
Thank you. I think the only thing, the only thing I would add, I have my report is we had asked previously for some. Some information about some legal, legal opinions that have been made by the municipality about. Our scope, what we can do, various things that affected Gerwood. And I saw the email today, but haven't fully absorbed it. So we have that information back, so we'll feed that into the process. Item number three, committee updates. Any committees want to make an update? I think we already have. Okay, not seeing any. So we will move on to number four, which is standing reports. We're sorry. Oh Brett, please go ahead, Brett.
Oh, I was, thank you through the chair. I was. Efforts towards the RV park proposed parcel disposal. After reading some of those reviews from the municipality, it looks like there's a path forward in that. So that's probably upcoming. In the next meeting and that's the only update forward. So thanks.
Thank you. Other committee reports. Okay, so go on to number four, standing reports. Proposed Gerwood Developments, there's a. A list in the packet. That's thirty-one. There's this in the packet. I think I, I provided one with some highlights on it. I was going to rely on it because there were some changes.
Color version will pop up on the screen here.
Oh, yeah.
It's just that I print in black and white.
I understand.
I'm chief. There you go.
They're in a lovely beige color. Yeah, so there was, there were some changes since the last meeting. Around some of these reflect changes in the comprehensive plan, which has now been approved, but they're not technically adopted. We got some more clarity on the. I think they're saying further down on the request from Tim Cabana as well. And then we've added the helicopter, potential helicopter operation in there as well and the Spinell Homes application. So this is basically just an update with the information we have that people can use as reference. We don't have anyone, I think specifically from any of the, we haven't asked anyone specifically to come along and talk about these items we do from time to time. But we don't have anyone today. If there are any questions, ask away. If not, we can, we can move. Next item is. G B S A non-property tax funds. I hadn't seen any update on this. Don't think we have any more information. I expect to have something before the next meeting about short-term rentals, about what happened with the. With the information that was requested from platforms. So we may have some information by next month. Next item, G B S rules and procedures. Do you want to speak to this?
I do not have an update on this, but I hope that now that the Gerwood Comprehensive Plan is. It's not taking up tremendous amount of time and energy, we can dive back into revising those procedures.
We did have a discussion about having a work session before our next regular meeting. So sometime in April. Either immediately before or probably another date beforehand. So maybe we can see if that's feasible in terms of scheduling. Probably close to the meeting. S C R registration regulation, we'll be covering later on tonight. Gerwood Comprehensive Plan, I can provide an update there. As, as we heard from Assembly members, the Assembly approved the Comprehensive Plan with three amendments. Four amendments, actually. Two of which we, I think the community was pumped with, some of them were technical amendments. And then obviously the change in status of the Mitten area, which in general community indefinitely imagine Gerwood and. G B S did not agree with. And then there was one other final change in some language in the ordinance itself that didn't affect the plan. The, all the plan was. Accepted or approved, I guess, by the Assembly. It's not technically adopted and in effect yet. It requires a memo from the planning department to say that everything is complete and updated and done. They have the final copy and I heard today that they're intending to have that memo ready in front of the Assembly on the eighth, so next Tuesday, next week. So, sorry, Tuesday, two weeks, which is the next assembly meeting. So it should mean that if. If the Assembly accept that memo and approve it as part of consent agenda, which they almost certainly will. Then that is the date when comprehensive plan becomes in effect. So that will then be our comprehensive plan. That's all the update I have from that. So we're basically the end of the journey. Any questions on any of the material we just covered? If not, we will move on to number five, which is service provider report. Chief Weston?
Yes, hello. So it's all good news, I guess. So we had six firefighters complete firefighter two practical testing. Yesterday at the Anchorage Regional Training Center. And that was great. We do, every time we do a training class, though, we, it does. Speak to the part that we do need to get the industrial park training site sort of up and running. It does short changes when we have everybody at fire training in Anchorage. And sort of balancing the shift coverage is important, not for the first call, but when we have the second call, when another call's going on. So. But yes, wonderful news that six people finished that. We have some new members starting in April. We also have an E M T two class. That's going to be occurring and an engineer refresher. Our grant funded, federal grant funded EMS mannequin is. Somewhere in the ocean on the way to us from Norway. It will go to Texas and then it will come up to us. This is a thirty-one thousand dollar EMS mannequin that we were able to get a grant for. And I'm hoping that I can have the local Gerwood kids name it. So if you think and think of a good name and you want to pass it on to one of our local smaller residents. We'll have a contest for naming the mannequin. And then wildfire season starts, has already started. We're staffing up and we appreciate being included in the Anchorage Community Welfare Protection Plan Updates. And, and we also have been looking also at the staff, at our staffing levels compared to the cruise ship schedule. I have a copy of the cruise ship schedule printed out and I can share that with any best local business owners that would like to see when the cruise ships are coming in. Or I can share the link with you for Seward and Whittier. So it's looked like it's going to be pretty busy. The cruise ships are going all the way through to October this year, the beginning of October. So. And with wildfire season, we're going to add an extra position on every day, just so we have. Four funded positions and then the rest on call, just to hopefully catch any fire start that starts. Sooner than later. And then tsunami signs, I am still. Rattling the cages of the municipality, trying to get them to put up the tsunami signs. They did mention that they have some brochures for us, but that's not really what I want. I just want to have the tsunami signs up in the tsunami area. And then I appreciate everybody getting ready for volcanic ash prep. A lot of the guidelines they are recommending are good for any disaster. So we look forward to working that. And I also look forward, I want to thank everybody that's reached out to me and just sort of shared their personal preparedness on volcanic, volcanic ash prep. And I appreciate that very much. Any questions for me?
Any questions from supervisors?
Thank you, Chief Weston. This is Brianna. I would just ask you to let us know if you need support in assistance, asking for those signs. I know you were going to wait another week or so from the municipality. So I'm happy to help with that. We think G B S would be as a body.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's great. Yeah, I, we have been waiting, you know, a couple of years now. So I'm hoping that they do get up. I'm trying to get them up before tourist season. And, you know, I do think it's important to have them up before tourist season, just so that if there is the unlikely event of a tsunami occurring. We at least know people, at least when they get the ping on the phone, they know that they're in or out of a tsunami area. So there's that. And then I also wanted to mention the, sorry, I'm adding things in. Their earthquake shake trailer is going to come down one Sunday along with the Sunday market. And also I'm trying to get us a couple of shipping days or something like that with the wildfire program as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, go ahead.
All right, I think she said that she was, she helped on the, was it a fire? Was it a fire plan that you were able to weigh in on? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry, Michelle, I missed that.
No, that's okay. Anchorage is, Anchorage received a large funding amount. To do wildfire community fire protection. And what they have to do to get more funding is they have to complete the update of the Community Welfare Protection Plan, which. Hasn't been done in a number of years. And so they're working through that process. So they have consultants that are doing a sort of citywide plan. And they have been around Gerwood. I spent four quality hours with them. So they are around Gerwood and so we're working on that plan with them. But it's Anchorage, it's Anchorage together, not just a Gerwood plan, you know, so. But the key point, the key point with that plan is no funding will be released to Gerwood. Until they figure out the plan, because I've been asking for wildfire money, but it has to be. They want to do it according to the priorities that are set by the plan. They have to finish the plan to set the priorities. So that's kind of where we are right now.
Got it. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to police. I don't see the chief online.
No, but I talked with him. He is actually assisting officer tonight, so he is not able to be here, but he did send the report. Stats for last month and, and they are working on several different trainings for officers. They rotate officers out as they can, you know, limited coverage. So this month, they're, they're working those officers through. They are fully staffed. They did have some people out on sick leave and they're back now. And so those were sort of the general updates for them. The next big event is Slush Cup and they'll be working at the resort. Prepare for that. At the end of April and the closing of the resort weekend. And, and moving towards summer operations, as Chief Weston just mentioned. Cruise ships are coming in and they're going to be very busy on the Whittier side. And so. They know that will lead to more traffic over here as well as tourists come in. So, so they're preparing for that to be ready for for the summer. So. But yeah, that's the general update from I got from chief.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions from the board? For the community?
Really quick, sorry. For the record, I think Supervisor Burnett asked last month the chief. If you could have certain traffic speeds in certain areas and see work on that. So maybe we could just.
Sure.
I'm sure he.
Thank you. Move on to roads and parks.
Sure. So with parks, we want to give a big thank you to what we call our trail fairies that have been out working. There's been many people helping us over this last couple of weeks and basically those last two months with all the wind damage that we had. We're happy to report that the Beaver Pond Trail is reopened. It's passable. It's not maybe like it used to be, but it is still, and if you're very talented on a bike, you can ride it. So there's been some great trail work out there and most recently some dirt work to get that going again. So we really do appreciate, we have a great group of volunteers here in the community. And if you do want to volunteer trails, we just ask that you coordinate with myself and we get you to sign a liability waiver before you head out. And we can also coordinate you with projects that are going on. Next area of focus for us will be Abe's Trail. There's a cluster of trees up there. So we'll be working on that. And by the time my trail crew gets here, we'll probably be in great shape. So we can work on real tread work. So that this really helps us to get a kickstart on the season. As always, Margaret and I are keeping an eye on different maintenance things around the park until our seasonal crew comes in in mid-April. And so if there's anything you see out there, full trash cans, mud mets empty, things like that, broken equipment, just let us know. We'll try to get taken care of. Out there as it goes. We are looking for park caretakers or, excuse me, campground hosts for the summer. So if anybody has an aunt or uncle, they want to get out of their house and they got a R V, send them our way and we do have a spot there. It's a volunteer position. We do provide electricity and a dedicated spot to park. And then they help to help us with managing the campground and the, and the, and the park for the summer. So, so we are looking for somebody there. We have a lot of projects slated to get going this year. We'll be replacing a bridge at California Creek adjacent to Town Square. We'll be working on a trail project on the Virgin Creek with trail tread improvements through the Youth and Parks Crew. We are working on the Lower Virgin Creek Trail. We're working on several bridges on the middle of Ditterod. We have a crew coming in to work on the middle of Ditterod this summer. We are working through the final steps on the plans for the hand tram replacement with the suspension bridge. And it will be hopefully going out the bit on that this summer. And then we have a project going on with Lions Club Park to build a new pavilion over there that's been funded through several different sources, including a land water conservation grant. And then, like I said, we'll be out doing quite a bit of storm repair from this winter on different trails. As they melt out and expose what was damaged out there. And the first thing we'll be kicking off of this week is we'll be tearing down the dugouts here for the Little League. And building new dugouts. And so those will be taken down this week, exposing the ground so we can put in slabs for the new concrete. And get those going before Little League season starts in mid-May. A nonprofit grants, reports and grantees have turned those in and. Final revision assurance should be coming as well soon for those. I won't go into all the details here because the packet does have all the different things, but just highlighting on our different grants that we have or working through. For this year. And then as always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our websites and our social media up to date. And then a bunch of links in here to find different things from Anchorage School District to Center Geese's weekly newsletters, things like that. So lots getting ready for in parks and trails. Switching over the roads, even though March begins with an M, it is not May out there. And so we do give people a reminder, don't put the shovel away yet. And we told the crew not to take the plows off until we know more. But we are managing the situation. It's been very interesting winter, to say the least, with what we've seen here in the valley. And we'll probably be out this week grading roads again. We graded roads every month. We graded dirt every month this year for the last year. So that's pretty impressive. Most of the time we're grading sand or ice and snow through the winter months, but we'll be doing that. We did take, or we did receive thirty bags of calcium today for dust control. So once roads are in a condition that we can start grading and compacting and sealing those up. And then we'll be putting that out for dust control as it goes. We're still slated to get started with spring cleanup, starting in mid-April. We are anxious to get it started early, but we know as soon as we do, it's going to snow and they're going to have to put more sand back out and do it all over again. So we're just watching as it goes. But we are preparing to start projects when we can. And one of those is hauling in the gravel that we purchased out of Bird Point. And we'll be doing that in conjunction with a project down in Old Girdwood on Old West. So we'll be preparing to get the yard ready for the stockpile of that material that doesn't go to the project there in Old Town. Other major projects is the Ruann Fish Culvert Funding. We made it all the way through the EPA process and we are waiting for a word from them. As well as we know, the federal government and grant funding is kind of a limbo. We did, we did hear reports that we had finished the NEPA review and that we were pretty much in the final stages. Now we're just waiting to see if that money will actually come to us. So that's 1.6 million for that box culvert down there, which will require a 20% match from the service area. And we're hoping we might be able to see that money so we can get design done. Luckily, we've already finished the survey on it, so we should be able to jump right into design with the survey work that we have completed several years ago. So the next big project is the Davos Fish Culvert at Elias Creek. We've already engaged the contractor to start on that. We had them go out and bring down the trees that were within the construction area to get ahead of the bird window. And so they did drop all those trees over the last several days. And then when conditions allow, they will get started on that project. And it will take about several weeks to get it done. Part of that project would make it a little more complex is we have to lower the water line to give good separation between the bottom of the culvert or the bottom of the creek and the, and the water line. So that adds a little more complexity to the project, so it takes a little bit longer. But it is off and running, so we hope to see that done hopefully before forest fair kicks in. And then we'll be starting summer maintenance projects with Western, starting here in mid to late May or April with getting things going with cleanup and then moving into general maintenance and drainage improvement projects. So we'll be going with that starting right away. And then with industrial lot, I am working with the HLB staff and we're going to do the survey this spring, summer and get that plating process to go to plot out the industrial lot for the Girdwood Service Area. So they, right now are engaging in procurement to get that survey team to get it out there and do that. And so our hope is that we get through the survey, the plating process will be completed by winter next year. And then the land will be transferred to, to this, to the road service area or the Public Works Department really. And, and we can set up the training center for the Fire Department as mentioned tonight. So, so those things are in motion and we hope to have that going. We'll probably have further updates for the board as we discuss what the, if there's any costs associated with transferring the land to the, to the maintenance department and keep you informed as that goes. So finances, we're in the, still in the first quarter of the year. So the bills are still coming in, so the budgets are fairly low at this point. But this will start to crank up as we get further into the year, especially into the summer maintenance. You know, plowing has been low, so we can actually turn that money around and use it towards a lot more maintenance projects. We deferred for many years after heavy winters. So we should be able to catch up on a lot of the projects that have been on our list for five years, 10 years, hopefully. So we can get through some of those and knock them out as we go forward. And any surplus we have will go towards the debt for the engines that we purchased and the new engine we purchased for the Fire Department. So, so we can use that in many ways to catch up where we're at with different things going on out there. But yeah, that's sort of a run over on the different things. And then just some meeting schedules here. And different things coming up in April. We'll do the end of year budget when, in April. And as we get, the city hasn't closed out all the budgets for this year. So, but we're pretty, we can give you a very good estimate where we're at this point in time when we get to that point. So, but if anybody's got any questions, I'll take them.
I've got two quick questions. So that figure for the road expenditure 2024, are you expecting that to be close to the final number? Or it's around 450, 455? Or are there bills that need to be added to that?
That's just the contracted amount.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, it's pretty close.
Okay.
Yep.
Should expect that sort of surplus, that size surplus, 250-ish?
250-ish in that area. Yep.
Thank you.
And that will mostly, we can get the details on this later, but I will drop into the undesignated account, which then goes directly towards the debt on the fire.
Yeah, I thought that's what you meant, I just wanted to check.
Yeah.
And second question is, can you give an update on where we stand for the parks plan?
Yes. We are going to have a kickoff meeting Thursday with Huddle. And at that point, we will produce, I think I might have put that in the report, but we will produce a timeline and a schedule and then bring that back to the board and the community. And, and things will probably get going pretty quickly and we'll work through it through the summer. And, and hopefully start to get a draft plan by the end of year.
I think the comprehensive plan we said took is, probably took two and a half. You were expecting, what, about six months?
Yeah, there will be less committee and more work, so.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Community? Okay, so we'll move on to our next item, which is public comment. Does anyone have any public comments? Please state your name, limited to three minutes per person on subjects not on the agenda.
Like a public comment, I think it'd be more appropriate if I got up and spoke from the microphone over here. All right, hi friends and neighbors. My name is Brian Burnett and I live over on Timberline Drive. I'm here tonight to talk about a coffee mug. I got a picture of a coffee mug that a friend of mine sent to me. Don't know if out there in TV land, you guys can see this. This is a coffee mug. Girdwood locals tears. And I'd kind of like to talk about it for a second. It, it has to do with the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan that represents a collaborative community undertaking. Hundreds of us Girdwood residents worked together thousands of hours to craft this plan. It was then amended and approved by the Anchorage Assembly. We all heard about that today. I'm proud of the work this community put forth and I'm operation, I'm optimistic. This generational document will help guide development in our community. There is also an amendment to the Assembly ordinance that, that called for the comprehensive plan. And it wraps up by stating that there are competing visions within the community regarding the direction of Girdwood's future. And the competing, and now, and that's end quote. The competing visions, as I see it, are an overwhelming majority of our very engaged community versus a foreign corporation that's determined to push development into our upper valley. The picture represents the attitude of that corporation. An order, an order of these mugs was delivered to the team that completed the Aliaska Master Plan and pushed it across the finish line ahead of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan. It's my understanding these mugs came from Palmeroy. This is a group that stood before us and before the community, GBOS, planning and zoning and assembly stating how they were going to work with the community to do great things with our community, make our town a great place to live, work and play. However, this mug represents a character of this foreign corporation that stands to receive almost 100 acres of the most valuable land in our community. As a corporation, they have no obligation to our community. They have an obligation only to their shareholders. I believe it's in the best interest of Girdwood and the municipality to halt land transfer until we can review the RFP and the letter of intent. The letter of intent needs to be made available to us here in Girdwood. We should be able to review it at GBOS. The group that responded to the RFP and prevailed is no longer intact. The makeup is completely different. This needs to be looked at. So I truly appreciate the thoughtful content that was included in the Second Amendment that will classify the land that on parcel 6011 is mixed use. I'm looking forward to reading the copy of the amendment as it is added to the plan. This is a genuine attempt to include trail-based recreation, a year-round multi-use trail system of multiple trails for the community. If the trail system were to be built and then housing developed around the trails, the value of the development would be significantly increased. Will Palmeroy reciprocate with funding trail building from the additional revenue realized in higher property values? We need detail to what is going to happen to the.
You've had three minutes, can you just wrap up?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to thank you, thank everyone for their continuing collaboration of this generational opportunity to execute a big picture outlook into how Girdwood can develop this community.
Thank you.
Bless the tears.
Crystal, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I do want to say that I am really happy that the Girdwood Area Plan is passed. I know it was a lot of effort over many, many years and I'm, I am glad that it went, it got through. I think I would, if I didn't include the fact that I do really, really appreciate the work that Randy has done for, for, I mean, my project in particular, the first $1.6 million that came to Little Bears was a direct result of Randy's efforts and I really want to thank him for that. But, and Zach, I really appreciate as well. But it is difficult for me and frustrating for me to watch all the decisions being made for us when there's not a single person up there that lives in Girdwood. And it's difficult to feel like you have any say and also just a general feeling of defeatedness. So anyway, that's my comments on that. I want to say that I did testify at the end of assembly about Project Anchorage. And the project that I had turned in was Girdwood Arts and Recreation District. And just stating my interest in pursuing that project regardless of any proposed sales tax. I do think that it would be an interesting asset for Girdwood to develop. And anyways, if anybody is interested in participating with me and alongside others that are working on this, please reach out to me, crystalhoka@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
I'll say that.
Please go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Keith McCormick, thanks for letting me speak here. I'm from South Anchorage. I'm running for the South Anchorage Assembly to fill Randy Salt's seat. Proud to have his endorsement. He's been a great mentor as I branch into this new sphere. I know I introduced myself last time via Zoom. I apologize, I wasn't able to make it in person, but I felt it important to be down here. So I'll be around to talk with people after the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Not seeing any online in the room, so we will move on to old business, item number six, appointment to PSAC CP. Let's start, take this.
Yes, we have received a application of interest to fill the remaining Public Safety Advisory Committee seat. Tim Astle?
Astle.
Astle, okay. Tim Astle and Tim's here tonight with us, but he has submitted his application. And so we put it before the GBOS to consider approval to fill that seat.
Okay. Let's say, Tim, is there anything you'd like to, would you like to just?
Yeah, just want to tell you real quickly, any questions anybody might have. Name's Tim Astle. I've been down in Girdwood now. We bought our place from Tom Owens back in 2006. Didn't get the kids out of the house and moved down here until about three years ago. So we're living down here full-time right now. Got rid of that house in Anchorage and now it's full-time Girdwood. I've been a federal probation officer in District of Alaska for about 21 years. Prior to that, I was a state probation officer, parole officer and type two police officer for about eight years. And I've worked in about three or four of the correctional centers in Alaska. So a lot of the time in the correctional setting, still working, still doing that right now. Elder retirement, but still working. But I just, I saw the seat availability, have some friends, both with the Whittier Police Department and Anchorage Police Department. And they said I'd be a good fit. And so just wanted to put forward my time and anything I can do for the, for the community.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are any questions from the board or we could, or identity motion to Tim Astle to the CP?
I move to point Tim Astle to be on PSAC.
Thank you. You're a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions as well? Comments?
I'd just like to thank you for applying and giving us this really great letter. All of your experience sounds very, very fitting for the seat and beyond, but it'd be a great asset to that.
Thank you. Just want to make sure you, you have an opportunity as well, Jennifer? Okay?
Thank you, I don't have anything to add.
Thanks, I just want to make sure you could hear us. Excellent, so I think we, unless there's any more discussion, let's move on to a vote. Let's do this by roll call, please.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion passes, 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations. Now the work starts. Okay, let's move on to item number seven, agenda item NUC 2407 dash 04. GBOS to Forward Revise Service Area, STR Registration and Regulation for Girdwood. This comes from GHTC. Right, in the last meeting, we asked GHTC to consider a couple of changes around adding in some consideration of two categories, short-term rentals, and they declined to do so. Here is the same thing as we saw before at our prior meeting. I can, it's nearly no different from last time, so I don't know that we need to introduce it and go through the background again, unless somebody would like to do so. Okay. Any comments or thoughts from the board?
My initial thoughts are that since we discussed this at length last month, that we do not take on this item tonight as I think also participants can re-market for other items. And people have put a lot of gravity to this, so if we narrow what, what we'd like to see on this and/or bring up what the assembly would say might need to add what we'd like.
Well, I guess ultimately what we have is, you know, what we, all we can do is forward this on and ask. We can't do it. We have to rely on the assembly or planning to go forward and actually turn this into regulations. So that would be our next step. I will ask Jennifer first. Your comments, Jennifer?
I am very sorry, but Brianna's voice kind of cut out a couple of times. I wonder if I could just get a recap. I heard some of it, but not all of it. I'm sorry.
We'll move, actually, we're going to move the microphones, it's between all three of us.
Thank you, Jennifer. I probably stuttered also, so that did not help. But I was short from just making a statement about, because this was discussed at length last month, I look forward to a brief one this week or today. And a lot of work has been put into this by GHTC. And I was just trying to say that I didn't know what the assembly or planning would, which I'm having hard times formulating what I'm trying to say. So I don't have anything else to add.
That's okay, that's perfect. If I may, through the chair, I just had one comment about this.
Go ahead, please.
I do know that not only did we talk about this a great deal at the last meeting, but GHTC also spent a lot of time, and I know Brett has his hand up, so I won't rehash that unnecessarily. But I think, I think we are at the point where we should, you know, move this forward as is. I, I don't agree that we have to have it 100% perfect because I, I agree that who knows what changes will happen. If we can see anything now, we can see that the city pretty much does what they, what they need to do anyway. So let's, let's get the ball rolling would be my vote as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments.
Mike, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think as far as this goes, it's absolutely fine. My concerns about this, as I've said from the beginning, is we want more than just registration. This attack, this is registration. It doesn't go any further than that. It doesn't put any mechanisms in here to go any further than registration if we want to in the future. So it doesn't lay the groundwork for what we may need in the future. And I think that's a missed opportunity. And the second part is that when we passed our resolution just a year ago asking for any short-term rental regulation to cover four distinct, to have four distinct goals, this approaches.
Um, and it doesn't really address many of the others. One of them, I think one of them is outside of the, one of them does partly address it. Partly addresses the issue of, um, of permit money coming back to, uh, the service area, which I agree with. Um, it doesn't address the distinction we, we said that was important between, um, short-term rentals, which were used, which were basically tech, part-time short-term rentals, uh, used by people who live in the community and property they live in. And, uh, the fully commercial, uh, short-term rentals that are, I would argue, and I think many people have seen evidence for this, are much more damaging to a community. They're the ones that drive up housing costs. They're the ones that take, um, housing units off the market. So it doesn't address that. Um, and it, uh, and it also doesn't provide any direct incentives for, um, moving between short-term rental and, uh, long-term rentals. It doesn't provide any incentives to long-term rental. And, uh, as I mentioned last time, and as I've discussed before, both the GHTC and here, uh, there are some proposals and some fairly small changes that would allow us to do both of those. And I'm a little disappointed that, uh, GHTC hasn't really properly engaged. I would say in my opinion, it hasn't deeply engaged in that. Um, so I think this is a missed opportunity and, uh, I would, uh, I would hope that we, uh, consider future changes to this. Um, but I think it's also at the same time, we need to do something and, uh, this can get the ball rolling. I think there'll be modifications before it becomes code.
Okay, uh, thank you for helping there. And I would, Jennifer, you could go ahead next.
I apologize, legacy hand.
Oh, all right. No worries. And I'll hold my comment till after Brett.
Uh, thank you through the chair. Yeah, Brett Will Banks, co-chair GHTC. I just wanted to get on the record that at our last meeting, there was, uh, some distinctions, uh, trying to be brought up for, as Mr. Edgington said, uh, you know, those who might live, uh, in a property while engaging in short-term rental. And we did discuss it at length and, you know, we thought this was the most modest of beginnings. You know, this has been well-vetted through LUC. It was hard to, there is a differentiation in fees for, you know, uh, onsite or not onsite type of registration. So there was an accommodation for that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that the conversation's still open on, on these things and, uh, trying to get the framework in place is the most important thing at this point. Um, so that we can have local influence and make these local decisions because these are not the types of conversations that are happening at the assembly level when they talk about short-term rental regulation. So the important, uh, point to remember is that we are really considering keeping these decisions local so that we can make those types of, uh, guidance, policy changes in the future that help encourage, uh, as a necessary long-term rental inventory. And all of those discussions are happening at the committee level and have been, um, you know, vetted through the LUC. So, uh, this brings a very modest approach, the beginning of this framework. And, uh, I just encourage support, uh, if we focus on local solutions to local issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Crystal?
Hi, Crystal Hoke. I'm, uh, co-chair on Girdwood Housing and Economic Committee as well. And I just wanted to give a little bit of context from what I understand is that, you know, GHAC had put together this framework several months back. And then it got re-brought up at the last GBOS meeting and then there was an amendment to add an accessory use on there. So that basically was different from what, um, you know, in addition, I guess, to what GHAC recommended. So then it came back to GHAC this last month and we did discuss it for, um, an hour and 15 minutes, I believe. And there was a motion made by me actually to add the accessory use. And then after comments from multiple, um, committee members, it became clear to me that it, it, it became more confusing in my opinion. And so I withdrew the motion. Um, and then nobody else made a, a new motion. And I do think that that, that kind of emphasized that we liked the framework and trying to get the registration across the finish line as kind of like, we have to see if we can even get this accomplished. Um, and so we want, we're trying to keep it simple. Um, the accessory use question, in my opinion, um, makes it more confusing. And there is, there's a lot of differentiation between, I guess, like a second home. And if you, so you're, so the owner is occupying sometimes, but then short-term renting sometimes. And in my opinion, that's the largest percentage of our short-term rentals that we have in the community are, operate like that. Um, so, and I do think there's actually very little that operate strictly as a corporation. Uh, again, this is just my opinion. Um, but anyway, the, uh, the bottom line is that GHAC was not in support of adding that amendment. And so I just want to make sure that GBOS members really understand it and do think that the public will be able to understand it. Because if GHAC members found it confusing, we understand that more than, you know, better than the average public. Um, so anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Crystal. Brett, is your hand still up from before?
Uh, my apologies.
Just checking. Okay. Any other comments in the room or from the board if I'm still chairing, then we need a motion to discuss this further.
Oh, since I'm not chairing, I'll make a motion to, um, to move this forward.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by Brian. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, so I, um, he said, I still think as a, as it stands, I've got no problem with moving this forward as it stands, except, um, it does miss a couple of things that we will need. And I think that we're going to have one chance to do this. I think the idea of we can, we can go through the significant amount of work to get something introduced and to get the assembly, effectively the assembly to do something on behalf, our behalf, that's going to be a heavy lift. I don't think we're going to get a second bite of this. So I would encourage, as we move forward, I would encourage, I think what we're starting with here is a framework. And it will almost, we know it will be different when it actually comes to, uh, when it, when the assembly have finished with it, or at least when it gets to the point even where it's introduced to the assembly. So we need to keep our eye on it. We need to make sure it, uh, it meets our, both our short-term and longer-term goals, if you excuse the pun. Um, and, uh, I'm happy to, uh, vote to move this forward now.
I'll just say, this is Brianna.
We're now swapping back.
Okay, I just, uh, trying to echo the same thoughts I said before, but, and that we said last meeting. It's, this is a great, uh, first step, I guess, that's a big step. And I look forward to planning and assembly of fine-tuning it and hopefully fulfilling our four goals that we would, um, reiterate through further, further, uh, participation in this process. And kind of the path of least resistance would be, I'm, I'm in support of this. Yep.
Sorry, quick point, what? Did, uh, the motion get seconded?
Yes, Brian, seconded. And I'm finished with my statement.
Good. You have it.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Yeah, we have a roll call, please.
Sure. Who's chairing?
I'll be last.
Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman? There.
Unmuted.
Kelly, we can't hear you yet. We can barely hear you squeaking. There you are. Go ahead. She says yes. Okay. Uh, and then Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
And then before we switch chairs again, record Kelly Ockman joined at eight 10 PM.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, we're getting through things tonight. Um, okay, uh, number eight, uh, GBSA bond, Timberline Drive. Um, specifically, I don't know if there's anything much we can add. Um, we heard earlier that the, uh, the, the assembly are thinking their communications are reminding people that not everyone, not everyone pays for every bond. Um, we can do this. I believe there is some, there is an advocacy group which, uh, formed. And I believe they're doing some advertising this coming week, uh, for people who are, uh, voting late in the process. Also have a letter in the ADN. Um, but otherwise, I think, you know, we've explained why we propose the bond. Um, if there's any questions about it, we can perhaps answer questions. If not, I'll just hand it over to the board if there's any other comment.
Brianna, I'll just thank Kyle for your, uh, write-up of, uh, basic facts of the, the bond so that we could write something for the Turnagain News and share, because voters in Girdwood definitely wanted to know more about it. This was great.
Do you have a comment? Any questions from the community? Not seeing any. Thank you. Actually, I should say, is there anything you wanted to add staff or?
No.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to item number nine, uh, which is bills in state legislative session. Um, there were two particular bills we pulled out previously. Um, HB 13, which is extends the range of property tax exemptions. And, uh, Senate Bill 14, Funding Source Workforce Housing. Um, we actually have a potential, um, resolution in favor of HB 13, which is a property tax exemption, not the other one. Um, the reason being that's actually coming up for public hearing this week, uh, later this week. Um, there's already a, uh, resolution from the assembly, uh, from a month or two ago. This would be just something specifically from Girdwood. Um, so I think you have, those at least in the room have this in front of you. I could read it. Read it briefly. Uh, basically, it's the first few whereas is, uh, are just stating that Girdwood has particular housing problems due to our status as a gateway community and with a large, large number of tourists and, uh, second home properties. Um, Girdwood Comprehensive Plan calls for a number of policies, uh, to encourage long-term rentals and support low-cost housing. Um, and that this house bill gives flexibility, it gives optional, uh, property tax exemptions for housing which is converted from short-term rental to long-term rental. Um, it also gives greater flexibility for, uh, property exemptions for housing which is occupied. Um, and it gives, um, additional flexibility for housing which is rented, um, at, uh, below, uh, to affordable rates. Uh, to, can't remember the exact definition, but to, uh, to lower-income residents. And there's a couple of other changes, a couple of other things in the bill as well, around mobile home park investment, or investments in mobile home parks. Um, the bill's changed a little bit from the original, um, proposal. But, uh, actually, do we have a, do we have a copy of the latest version? Could you go to, um, would it be possible to go to just AK leg.gov and, uh, pull up HB 15? There was a revision last week. The, the way the state works is, uh, revisions to bills happen fairly frequently. So this would be a resolution in support of the general principles, not necessarily any final version. It's AKleg.gov. Excellent. And then if you type HB 13 into the top, into the box at the top, it should bring up the, um, information on the bill. And, uh, under documents. Uh, sorry, the, the, the tabs, but halfway down the page, just along there, if you go to the right.
Go to the right.
Uh, it says document. And then I think it's the Ennet version. So. Yeah. Yeah, that's the sponsor statement. Yes, that's, that describes what it is in the actual wording is, uh, in the, I think, the document about halfway up.
That one.
Yeah, that one's good. This is basically what it contains. So it gives, uh, the moment municipalities don't have much choice about how they apply property tax exemptions. Uh, this is one of the problems that actually hit, in my opinion, this is one of the problems uh, the Project Anchorage sales tax hit. Um, so this allows municipalities more flexibility in the way they can set up property tax exemptions. And they, it gives a car number of categories, um, where there can be exemptions. So first-time home buyers, um, owner occupancy, low-income families, um, conversion of short-term rentals, long-term rental, and then the second one is for mobile home parks. Um, so I think the, several of those apply to, uh, here in Girdwood. Um, so having more flexibility, I think, gives us more options of advocating for, uh, policies in the future. Currently, we don't have the tools to, uh, do any of this stuff. This is what it does. And, uh, again, the, the therefore is just saying we support the, we support the bill.
I have a question, Mike.
Yeah.
Uh, you mentioned that, thank you for your work on this. I think it's extremely relevant and I'm happy to support this uh, for places all over Alaska. And you said that if they change it or amend it, this is a principle of the support. So is there a way, it says that in here? Do we need to?
Um, well, we, it'll say by the day. We could put it in it. Um, but I think what we, what I would do is, uh, we could update this if, uh, if there's a significant change and we no longer approve. Um, if anyone's interested, there is a, uh, there is a public hearing on this on Thursday morning. Around eight o'clock at the, uh, Community and Regional Affairs Committee.
No other comments? I move to approve this resolution.
I have a second, the resolution.
Okay, do we have a, uh, we were on the second to accept to pass this resolution. Any additional comments from the board? Brian, go ahead.
Um, I'm wondering if we could, um, where it says therefore, I therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors expresses its strong support. I wonder if we can strike the word strong and just put support.
Yeah. So fair amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? I'm not hearing anything. Can I just ask, just so you can put it on the record, why, why, uh, remove strong?
Um, it, it, we don't need to qualify our support.
Okay.
It's either we support it or we don't support it.
So you're fine. Any further comments on the amendment? If not, let's do a vote on the amendment.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman? And Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion, uh, amendment passes five zero.
Any, uh, further discussion on the, on the motion itself?
Sorry, I'm reading too long. Mike, you said this, but when do you anticipate their voting on this?
Uh, it goes through a number of committees. There's a, there's a public hearing on Thursday in front of the, uh, uh, the, I think it's Community and Regional Affairs Committee. Um, and I can't remember if it referred, if it's referred to anywhere else before it goes to the floor. It might be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the community? Not seeing any. So there's no further comments, no further, uh, discussion. Let's move to a vote.
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman? Yes. Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
A motion as amended passes.
Thank you.
Quick question before we go to the next item. Is HB 14 coming up?
Um, I, I didn't see, uh, imminent hearing on SB 14, but I may have missed it. I did look through, uh, earlier today just to see what the priority between the two was.
Thank you.
Um, we should consider that and keep, keep looking. And if there are any other, if there's, you know, board members, you see any other, um, bills at the state level, good support, please, uh, make, make us aware. Okay, um, here, and if there's any more to discuss, number nine. So let's move on to number 10. Uh, GBOS letter to the MOA regarding development to Girdwood Airport, MOA Land Use Code. This is mostly about, um, parcel H, but not completely about parcel H. Um, so in your packet, there is the letter, draft letter. Entertain a motion to approve and send this letter.
For a discussion, this is Brianna. I will move to through the letter.
Thank you. You're a second.
And that's without seeing it yet today.
I have a second.
Thank you. So, um, just address it briefly. Um, but actually, if you go to the end of the letter, the, the first part of the letter basically just talks about the background. Then I don't. Then I don't think the municipality has been involved in this, really. I know that Senator Geisel has. So this is a brief background of where we are in terms of parcel H specifically. And then the, the key part is the very end of the letter, the three bullet points. So what we would be asking for is a clear statement from the municipal administration that they believe land use code does apply to to activity, to non-aviation activity on Girdwood Airport. A request, they informed the LSE for parcel H that they would require a land use permit before they did anything which triggered a land use permit. So that's things like clearing, grading, and definitely any kind of construction. And then make the, again, communicate with the State Office of Aviation that the municipality intends to enforce land use code at Girdwood Airport. And so that's really just, we've, we've known for a while, there's a, there's likely a clash between municipal the municipal opinion on whether land use applies at state airports or not, and the state opinion on whether it applies or not. So this is really just sort of kicking and trying to get some action happening now, rather than than sometime in the future. This was likely to happen anyway if the hotel development started. But I think this is, this is another example where, where I think it's important that the municipality asserts its opinion that land use code does apply. So there's quite a lot to read through here and it's quite dense background. As with most of these things, I can share it beyond one other Assembly member, sorry, one other board member. So I appreciate this is fairly late to read, but we can, and discuss it now, or if you want to, we can we can move on to something else and come back to this.
Uh, Kelly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Go to Kelly. And then what I was going to suggest is I saw Kai Holland came on, so I'll take your comment, Kelly. And then perhaps what we can do is just let Kai give a report and then come back to this. Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to come back to it. If the question on the table is discuss it now or discuss it later, I'm happy to discuss it later. When we discuss it, I have points to make or I have, you know, I have input, that's all.
Okay, great. Thank you. So nobody objects, let's move to, let's see. Kai Holland gives his report. We're effectively jumping back to, I think, item, item number one briefly. And then we can come back to this item. Okay. So Kai, I see, I see Representative Holland, I see you online. Would you like to give your state report?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is Kai. Sorry for jumping in late. We've been doing our resilience wildfire awareness meeting on the fourth Mondays. I, I think I just kind of hit a couple of high points. One is, of course, the education funding that has been important to a lot of people, that funding or that bill passed the House. That's House Bill sixty-nine. It's now in the Senate, so I'm following it there. If you're curious to follow that bill or others, there's a really convenient tool that I found really handy these days on AKleg.gov. You can put a bill number down in the bottom and it'll send you text messages anytime the bill moves or anything happens to it. I'm working on a couple wildfire-related projects. I've got a resolution that was just introduced in the House today on wildfire awareness for the season, trying to ramp up the work. Although there's a tremendous amount of work that's already going on, recognizing that we have a more significant wildfire season potentially coming up because of the low moisture conditions and the temperatures that we've had. So that's getting some attention. Economic development stuff, of course. I continue to move a couple of bills ahead related to innovation and emerging sector support for growing our economy in the future. And the LNG gas issue has kind of jiggled along nicely. There's a couple of projects that you've heard about in terms of some possible new projects for import. But also we've heard some potentially positive reports also in terms of some of the gas production development exploration going on Cook Inlet. So I wouldn't say we're out of the woods, but I am happy to, to see that there's some significant, you know, real progress being made on those areas. Capsis projects were submitted. The Girdwood one made it into the top ten for the, the Capsis projects coming out of the Senate District. But again, we're not expecting a whole lot of money for capital projects this year, so hold on tight. And, you know, I'd be surprised if we see much at all. We're sitting with a very large current deficit at this point and no clear path to be able to, to fill it. So the honeymoon will be over soon and we've had some really hard work to do coming up in the next month, trying to figure out how we're gonna close a gap that is seemingly too big to be closed. But other than that, we've got a, a meeting coming up on April fifth. It's in the afternoon. It's on the, the, the Facebook page that I've got, and you'll see a lot of promotion on that. But it'll be in the afternoon at the Lucy Cuddy Center on UAA on April fifth. We'll have all of the Anchorage representatives there at that event. I encourage people to come. I'll also do something either on the fifth or the sixth while I'm in town, down in the Girdwood Whittier area. But area, happy to take any questions if you have any for me.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I know you had some earlier, Kelly, but again, I want to give you the opportunity, you and Jennifer, if you have any questions.
Okay, I, I, I will just note, because I suspect you're probably on the same topic. I've got a meeting with Commissioner Ryan on Thursday and the, the Girdwood Airport is, is on the list of topics. So any information you want to send me between now and Thursday to help me get educated on issues would be helpful. I'm, I'm not nearly as conversant in all of it as Senator Geisel is, but trying to be more conversant and, and try to advocate where I can for that, particularly the parcel H issue that I know is important. So I look forward to learning anything more I can, as well as that meeting on Thursday. But do let me know if there's something specific I can be doing or asking that would help the process.
Thank you. I think the next fifteen or twenty minutes, you'll probably hear a lot of information on this. Any other questions on the state, on the state report from the community? I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much. So we will jump back now to, to item ten, which is again, the latter to the MOA regarding development at Girdwood Airport. So this is focused on parcel H, but it's a little bit broader than that. Kelly, you had some comments. Please go ahead.
Um, I can't wait to see what other people have to say and maybe I'll.
Okay, so again, I'll ask the board, does anyone have any questions or comments on this?
Comments? This is Brianna. I think it is a great summary of the issue at hand with some history and present and clear asks. And thank you for your work on this, Mike, and working with the community here. And I'm interested to hear from the, the Girdwood residents in the room on their thoughts on this letter before. And Jennifer has her hand up too.
Yeah, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Thank you. This, I definitely think this letter has some strengths. I'd like to see if we could also have a conversation. And I, and I hope it fits within, under this motion about kind of overall strategy. And I'd love to see us consider trying to engage. The one thing about this letter is it is it is quite clearly making a, a legal argument. And if there's any way that we could kind of coordinate with DOT and have a working relationship with them in the same way that I feel like we have with other DOT departments, that would be great.
Thank you. Kelly, do you want to, do you want to make your comment now or do you want me to engage the broader audience first?
Yeah, no, I just, I have a reaction to Jen's comment because it basically is in the spirit of, of kind of my perspective. And, you know, I have relationships with the state leasing office and have found them super collaborative. And as I've explored this topic with them and kind of where their heads at, you know, they've expressed to me a willingness and a desire to be a good neighbor. And so I would really like to see us at least start by a meeting with a subset of us, a work session, you know, something where we engage DOT, where we try and build relationships, where we bring them in collaboratively, rather than coming out with a fight. So for me, this letter is unnecessarily aggressive and positions us in opposition out of the gates, which generally does not yield the best long-term results. So I would really like to see us engage collaboratively, try and build relationships, have a conversation and see where we might find some middle ground before we go out straight for the legal angle and straight for the aggressiveness, knowing that we always have that in our back pocket. If, if we're unsatisfied with the collaboration, sure, we can, we can go to the more strong-arm approach. But I just, I really strongly believe that's not the right place to start.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up to the community more broadly and then we'll probably bounce around with additional comments. Would anyone like to, please go ahead, just say your name. Come to the microphone.
Well, I think they've all started. I'm Sean Holland with the DOT. And I don't want to confuse you with our structure, but I'm the Central Region Director. We have a statewide aviation group, which is separate. I have Clark Cox here and Britton Goldberg. And we're just here listening mode right now, but we're happy to answer any questions about process, let you know where we're at. I'll leave it there.
Thank you. So it seems like we've already started the engagement, whether we like it or not. Would anyone else from the community like to speak?
Sure, I will.
Again, if you can come up forward, Steve.
This is, I'm Steve Howerson again, and thanks for getting this on the agenda. This all happened kind of quickly. And what we, when I use the term we, kind of speaking along with Bill, really for, like I said, about ninety-eight people, I think thirty-seven text messages went out and we ended up with ninety-seven people who felt strongly enough to sign on to this letter. So what we were asking, I communicated with Jennifer. We, we were honestly asking for two things and it kind of goes along with what Kelly was saying. Initially, we just asked for a, a kind of a letter from the city, just slowing down the process. Because we're getting some help from the state, you know, from Senator Geisel, trying to work with DOT that way. And then with this new Girdwood Comprehensive Plan, we feel like the municipality has real standing to, to speak to this parcel H as well. So the two things we were asking of GBOS initially, and then this letter came out, which I think is very good. We were asking just for a letter from the municipality, asking the, the potential leasing, I don't even, have they signed yet? Have they executed the contract? So there's that, the lease has not been executed. And I'm not using their name, but we all know who they are because it's on the, it's on a previous sheet, it's Silverton. But we were just asking that they don't go in and clear-cut all the trees and, and work the land. I, I say this, you know, in jest, but kind of Alaskan style and then get the permission later. So that was one of the things we were asking from the municipality, was just to work together. And the other thing was for the municipality and the DOT to form, to come together and talk. And I think that's what Senator Geisel's trying to get done. And that's what we're, that's what we're going for here. When I read this letter the first time, I thought it was kind of saying it. Now I'm not so sure that it's really crystal clear that way. And then finally, you know, our, our intent, we feel like the intent of the Girdwood Comprehensive Plan and even of the airport plan itself is to have parcel H be undeveloped just permanently. The FAA themselves came in and put that fence up, I think it was nine eleven money, I'm not sure, in probably two thousand and two. And they actually fenced that whole portion off. So that's kind of our, our. Am I speaking correctly there, Camilla?
Yes, exactly.
So that's kind of what we're looking for. We're looking for just initially to work with Silverton and just slow them down. Because we heard from Senator Geisel, it sounds, it sounds like her staff maybe talked to them and they're trying to start building this summer. So we feel like we don't really have time to go real slow, I guess. And then the other thing is to get, get everyone talking. Really appreciate you guys being here. That's a pleasant surprise. I really appreciate that. So that, that's what we're looking at. I'm speaking to you guys too. And here's another neighbor. So, I mean, we have six people here in person, a couple of people online. It's real important to us. So appreciate you being here. And I can take any questions. Camilla's a very good expert on this too. And if anyone else wants to talk.
Anyone else like to?
Do you have any questions for what we're asking for?
I think if anyone else wants to speak from the, from the community.
So I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Aaron Brill with Social Mountain Guide, so for those who don't know me. But first off, I just wanted to point out something in your letter that's inaccurate. We are an Alaska-based business. I'm a Girdwood resident. My employees are Girdwood residents. And so we've been operating this business since two thousand and eight, it's an Alaska business. Although I did in a previous life, living and working in Colorado, it's been a long time. So I just wanted to mention that. I also want to mention to the neighbors that I look forward to reaching out to all of you individually. Hopefully, once I have my lease and kind of discuss the process. Right now, I don't have enough information of the status of exactly what it is that we're working with on parcel to be able to do that. I want to give you guys my assurance that I'm treating it the same way I treat it as if I live on Lake Tahoe. Basically trying to create the further separation of our hangar from the homes, because you fully understand the situation. From our perspective, I don't know, everyone here knows, the last year, our helicopter got destroyed by a moose being parked on ramp which tried to shed its antlers. And so that, the tune of several hundred thousand dollars and put us out of business for a couple of months there. So for us and our insurance provider, having a hangar is now a requirement, which is why we're trying to get it done as quickly as we can for the summer, which also is important for the employment or your unemployment. So anyway, I look forward to further discussions, but I just wanted to say.
Thank you. It's great, it's great that there are so many people in the room who can have face-to-face discussions. I'm gonna start, Camilla, and then I go to Chris. Can you come to the microphone, please? Camilla, thank you.
I'm Camilla Seabird, and Steve Howerson and I have been mostly the ones who have been sending out the emails and the letters. As he said, we started out with thirty-seven people out of our own mailboxes that text to, and it has grown to, I believe it's ninety-eight people who have signed on that are agreeing to, to oppose this development. And all due respect, Mr. Brill, it is not possible to to not be too close to any of the houses where we all live. It's just not possible. There is a state and a survey has already been made. The LSE has made, has had, has paid for a survey. And there is a state, quite literally, ten feet from my back door. So, you know, it's, it's personal, but it's also our goal that we have the aviation leasing rescind the lease and withdraw the part, withdraw parcel H from development and make it into the buffer zone that it has been as long as we have lived there since nineteen eighty-one. Well, actually longer than that. So that's our goal and I hope that the airport authorities are safe for our voice. I think it's important to the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm coming into this a little bit late because I've been on vacation, but Chris Erstod, I've been here a long time in Girdwood. I have a hangar at the airport. I've been operating, operating off the airport way before I had a hangar. When I first came down here, we had, in the eighties, we had fifteen airplanes on the airport. The last count that I made, I've come up with eighty-five. And that was maybe five years ago. I believe it's a lot more than that now. Yesterday, there's two R forty-fours parked on the other side of the runway, we're about to win it. There's no more parking on this airport. When I got my hangar, I went to the DOT and asked, what's going to happen with the properties to the north of the state ramp? And they said, oh, nothing in our lifetime. Well, guess what? It's our lifetime. And they've got a thirteen hangar complex there and a hotel, proposed hundred fifty-room hotel. I said, anything more? Is there any other properties? They go, nope, there's nothing more. And all of a sudden, there's And all of a sudden, there's this lot that just came up out of nowhere. And, and, okay, so now we're talking about the fencing down there by the lot. That fence goes perpendicular to the road all the way up to the creek. There is a, there was a slated road, they left a gate there. Slated road through there as a taxiway. It's unusable now because of.
Hey, Mike, the background noise picks up on the mic, they can't hear it.
There was slated road through there, that's why they left a gate. But as we all know, the creek came in, eroded away the bank. And that road is, that proposed road would be unusable. I'm just pointing out all the things that I see as conflicts. TruGetch Power Guide has a multi-million dollar building down there and they have so much business that they are leasing another hangar to park their vehicles at. And he, there's only a few commercial operations on the field. The rest of them are all private. So where is this helicopter out to get and park their vehicles? Their patrons' vehicles. That lot is so small and it's right next to the houses. They can't use that road, there's no parking. What prevents the new operator from building their businesses to four A-stars like CBG? Where are you going to put them? You know, and so there's a lot of, and here's another thing. The state may just come in and, and the state, the airport may just cut all their trees down on the, on the properties. I said, the only trees that are going to affect an airport are the ones on final and ones on takeoff, okay? And, and yet they left those trees up at that lot. And why did they do that? If it's a lot that's an airport lot? There's a lot of problems with this whole thing and, and that waterway that goes underneath, that goes right underneath the lot, that's the same river that goes out to where they're cutting all those trees down to build a culvert for the salmon stream right there. You know, it's just, I just wanted to make all those points. And where is, where is their driveway going to be? No? There's, there's just a lot of problems with that little tiny lot that someone just made up and all of a sudden it's a thing.
Would it, I, I appreciate that DOT or Aviation Leasing are here. Would it be possible for you to answer just one or two brief questions for lots of, if you're able to do that?
Yeah.
I just have a couple of quick questions. Main one is, I, I think we understand that the lease is about to be signed, there's a lease there. What does that actually allow? And what has to happen between now and when, for example, construction happens?
Great question. My name's Clark Cox, I'm the Leasing Program Manager for the State of Alaska Rural Airports. So we have, and this is Britton, sorry. I know, I'm not here with it. Britton Goldberg, Leasing Chief here for Anchorage. So we have nothing to do with Anchorage or Fairbanks. We do all other rural, two hundred and thirty-five rural airports, so Girdwood is one of them. So the lease has not been executed, I did know that, noticed that in the letter that it's been executed, we may want to make just a suggestion. So until that lease is executed, essentially access to the lot, just like any other lot on the airport, is, it's airport property. It's primarily for aeronautical purposes for the airport. Until the lot, until the lease is executed, there should be no development on the lot, clearly. If the lease, lease is executed, there is a process, the applicant would have to submit a building permit. And that is the big piece that DOT reviews for where the driveway is going to be, how high the building is going to be, the orientation of things, setbacks, working with the fire marshal for those kinds of steps through the municipality as a deferred jurisdiction, so there's a lot of steps before the building permit is executed, which then allows for development to take place. So the lease gives them the legal right to the land, they start paying their rent, they can access it, they can start using it, but no development, no physical development until the building permit is executed by DOT. And that has not even been applied for yet. So we can't answer some of those questions either regarding where the driveway is going to be, how high the buildings be. We haven't seen that yet, other than was on the original application, which is a concept. We take that as a concept.
And what is the typical, what is a fast timescale from lease being signed to permit being, building permit?
Yeah, as you can probably imagine, it varies from pretty quick.
Standard timeframes would be, in our contract boilerplate, you have one year to complete the survey. Surveys must be submitted to the Department of Transportation Public Facilities Survey Section, where they will review and more likely than not require multiple changes to be made to meet state standards. That can take an extensive process. I just recently had one that came through from Sildonia that took about four months to get our survey section to approve the submission. Following.
And that's a boundary survey, just of the lot, boundaries itself.
Just laying out the corners, putting in monuments, that sort of thing, and properly documenting with state standards being met. Then following that, the tenants can start their process for a building permit. Now, we, as part of the boilerplate, require developments with a certain dollar value be completed by the end of the second year of the lease term. So there would be a lot of front-loading before we could issue the building permit. As part of their application, FAA seventy-four sixty, which is an airspace determination, would need to be done. You'd be looking at, again, the state Fire Marshal's Office has deferred jurisdictions to the municipality of Anchorage. Municipality of Anchorage will be reviewing any sort of building plans, not zoning, but the actual construction and approving or denying their structural designs. Let's see, what else? See, Fire Marshal, FAA seventy-four sixty, and then.
FBI Bureau? Well, it's aeronautical, zoning is aeronautical, so.
Those are fairly quick.
Because Girdwood is not, definitely it's not within the, the building service area for Anchorage, although I think it can apply to commercial buildings. Most of our land use is done through zoning, and I know you were very careful to say not zoning. So my understanding is the position of the, of Alaska DOT is you're completely, you can ignore all municipal zoning requirements on any airport property, whatever it's used for. And I know that's not the position of the municipality. So this letter primarily is to make that clear and to get a clear statement from the municipality that it's not their position. So for example, as you mentioned, our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive plan is implemented through zoning and through, there was titled twenty-one land use regulations. And your position, I believe, is that you can ignore all of that, it doesn't matter. So for example, you know, in our current code, hotels are not allowed to use on Girdwood Airport, we have an assertive set of zoning regulations for that airport land. But I believe your position is that you can ignore all of that. Whereas for any other state facility, you wouldn't, you'd follow it. So I, this is the problem, I, I can't see a way around.
I would reference the Alaska Statute zero-two-point-two-five.
That's the, that's the original territorial.
Yes.
Yeah. What is the other state buildings that we? My understanding is every other state, every other building on state land, it's not that it's state land.
I got you, airport specifically.
That it's, it's, it's a state-owned airport. So, yeah, and I know there is a difference of opinion. I know it's never been ruled, it's just an opinion.
There you go.
So again, I think the, the, speaking more generally, the primary purpose of this letter was to get clarity and to get the municipality to clearly state that either they agree or they disagree with that. Because if they, if they agree that zoning has no impact, has no impact on anything that happens in the airport, we effectively have a huge chunk of the center of Girdwood, which is immune and completely outside of anything, you know, anything we discuss in the comprehensive plan, it's free for all. Not, cannot be free for all.
Thank you.
It's just, it has no, the community had zero impact on what it is. We have no democratic process to, or community process for influencing what happens there. So that is a big risk, I think, to the community and therefore this letter, at least on the municipal side, to clarify that point, what the municipal position is. I think there is a separate discussion more generally about how we can resolve the particular problem in front of us. But I think we have these two things going on in parallel. I will take, Kelly, did you have some comments? And then we'll go to Jennifer, and then we might consider.
A question or a follow-up question for you guys about a statement you just made, which is that outside municipal code, the community has no mechanism by which to participate in the.
I didn't mean that if I said it.
Well, that's how it landed for me, and so I actually wanted to kick it to you guys to, to be curious about what process and what mechanism there does exist by which the community might have a collaborative approach to development of the airport.
Are they step back in general or when we get a, so DOT receives applications, that's, you know, we are the recipients. So the commenter who said things have changed over the years, that's because someone applied and asked for and worked through the process similar to what we're discussing, given parcel H. We didn't go source out these applications, they come to us. So we're responding to public, commercial, whatever is requested at the airports. What we do then is the public process through the public notice, which you've seen, we post up here with the M and O folks. We post them, it's online, giving comments for, against, sometimes we get competing applications. That's kind of our normal process for working through land use approvals at the airport.
Then typically within that process, is there any, once the, once that process is complete, is there any mechanism by which the community has to say, or is it? Because I recall from the airport, you know, we all put in comments, or sorry, not airport, the hotel, we all put in comments. And I think there was going to be one more circulation where there'd be another comment period or another ability to kind of weigh in? Or is there any other formal process, it's just my question.
With the hotel, I believe we did write extra conditions in as a request or requirement from the FAA for additional, somewhat outside of what we will require, but it's going to be required for that tenant, should they get their lease.
Special provisions.
Correct.
So would something like that be possible to write into the parcel H lease since it isn't approved yet? If we drive that community interaction to, you know, to get at the heart of this matter, to get at the conversation and get at the yes and solution where perhaps, you know, is that another option we would have potentially for parcel H?
That we worked some in, there were some that we carried forward, the questions, could we put specifically something more in to require all that?
Require community engagement in the building process, such that it was a collab, that it was designed in that it would be collaborative versus the fear, which I think is valid, of being bulldozed over literally and figuratively in the process because we don't have a voice because of the perception that it's a black hole called DOT, which may or may not ultimately be requiring to be true.
Can we take that under advisement?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that's the idea of having a conversation rather than trying to have a conversation in court.
Agreed.
Where maybe there is some gray that we can exploit as humans who all want the same thing, which is an awesome Girdwood. I mean, ultimately, everybody in this room wants Girdwood to be rad. And so where's the, where's the middle ground where a lot of different versions of rad, technical term, can be represented?
Sure.
Well, at the end of the day, everything the DOT Aviation Leasing Office does is set up and backed by a statute and regulation. So seventeen AAC forty-five is basically our manual of operations for everything in there. And being Alaska Administrative Code, it would require amendments to be altered. So I would highly encourage anybody who's got an interest in the airport to check into seventeen AAC forty-five and how the processes are done. Again, as I earlier referenced, there is Alaska Statute zero-two-point-two-five covering the zoning and planning for airports as well. So I would highly recommend both of those be looked at. I can answer general knowledge questions, I would prefer, as I don't have my regulation book, which is about YAFIC with me. And frequently, we have to research the answers because they can be very specific or sometimes very broad in scope. So questions submitted in writing to the department and to myself or the airport leasing specialist, answered and comments, you know, or anything that you guys would like to know more about, we will try and find the answers and give them back to you.
Yeah, Jennifer, please go ahead.
Thank you. With the, with the chair's permission here, I had a question for the owner of the company or also just to clarify here, and again, I apologize, I can't be there tonight, the audio is mostly great. I think that I heard a very aggressive, we're going to start this summer from a company representative, and then I think I'm hearing from DOT, oh, don't worry about it, this is going to take some time. And I'm finding a disconnect between those, but I'm just clarifying if I misheard something.
Do you like to take that?
Sure. Yes, to answer that question, ultimately what the DOT is going to allow is what's going to occur. I mean, that's, I can't speak or anything more than that. I mean, our position is, once again, that we're super sympathetic to the situation. We weren't their original applicant, you know, this, this became available and we bid on it and we followed the process and that's kind of where we are. So until the DOT says what we can and can't do in the timeline, and we intend to keep, I mean, we were awarded, we were the awardee of the parcel H, it was a competitive bid process and there was, you know, I believe five other applicants, so even if it's not us, it's going to be somebody else. And I think in the short term anyway, that's our operation. I know there was concern about four helicopters, that's, that's not our game plan. I know obviously it's, it's just me saying that, but my other business endeavors, I have run more helicopters. And the reason why I like to just run the smaller operation than I do is because it's, it works better for me and for, and for our employees and ultimately probably better for Girdwood as well, right? So we only come in and out of the airport typically once a day, you know, once in the morning, we depart and once we come back. And then we operate from the hotel helipad for our guests, so. We don't need a lot of parking, we don't need a lot of, you know, a CBG-style scenario. Our business model is different, so hopefully that answers your question.
Brittany, you talked about, in this case, the longest.
Actually, sure. Could you come, could you come to the microphone, please?
Thank you. I was going to ask Brett, I think he, he covered what the, kind of the longest timeframe would be. What's the shortest that you've seen one of these go through? Well, that depends on what time of year the lease was executed. Building seasons are fairly short here, to be able to get the concrete in, again, that's not typically, construction is not my background. It's usually in the second year of the lease that a development would take place. It's very rare to see it actually happen and ground be broken in the first year of a lease. It would take a lot of front-loading to be able to get that far and there are significant concerns in the area. There is the Anadromus Stream, we are aware of that, so environmental would need to be taken into account. The lack of access, as has been mentioned, as it sets right, other is a Department of Transportation Public Facilities Maintenance and Operations access down at that end of the airport. That is the first gate as you come up Mount Hood Road onto the airport property. That would be included as part of this lease, that would be their access at this point in time. But there are multiple questions that would need to be answered prior to the issue of a building permit. I said, the FAA will need to review this, the municipal building code inspector will need to review this, we will need an environmental review. There could be, it comes up as we go through it, this area is completely raw. So there may be things found. We do know that there is the NSTAR natural gas pipeline that was emergency relocated during, excuse me, during the erosion event a few years back, that also took out what would have been the proposed Davos Drive extension. So there are several questions that need to be answered before a building permit can be executed.
I just have, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. If I may, first, two questions, please. First one is super simple, where, where does the master, the Girdwood Master Plan from two thousand and five live?
So it should be available to the public on the Alaska Aviation Systems Plan.
Okay.
It is part of the alaska.gov system. I have been made aware that the link was not working. I have notified IT to hopefully get that fixed.
Okay.
I did provide that master plan as requested, it was a very large document, about three hundred pages in total. It is approximately twenty years old.
Thank you. And then you, you gave us a statute for kind of working with the precedents for conditions being placed on the lease. There's a statute that we can work with?
Well, so as far as zoning and planning, it's typically under Alaska Statute zero-two-two-five. So again, I would reference that.
Okay.
The authorities for that one.
So, so there is precedence for conditions being placed on, on leases for construction and operation at airports as far as limiting traffic or allowing vehicle traffic or what have you. So that's a common occurrence on, on. So that's a common occurrence on leases?
If there is a specific situation relevant to the proposed lease, that is always taken into account. For example, we have the special provisions that we included with the bid packet. They should have been posted out as part of the public notice. Those are absolutely special provisions that are unique to this parcel H. So I don't know if you guys had had a chance to reference those, review those, but they are not part of our standard boilerplate. They are specific to parcel H.
And one last question. Sorry about that. And then, and then there are conditions also in the lease on if the lease is passed on and sold to someone else, the, the conditions remain with the lease?
Yes. So the contractual obligations remain the same. A lease can be assigned to a new lessy who would take over, but that subject is department review and approval.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Just follow up to Brian. I'm going to clarify what I think might have been underneath your question going back. But the airport has something written into the lease that the process requires further public input. Did I hear that, Ray?
I would, no, I don't believe that that was put forward.
I think what we're talking about is that we did write that into, that did work into the other lease, the lodge. That exact wording did not come into this one.
Yeah. No, but that's the precedent. Further engagement with the public. And so my question, and maybe we need to put it in writing, you know, is, could we do something similar on parcel H to drive procedurally the integration that we're all staying, we commit to now, and what would that look like? So, so I think that, is that the precedent, the saving you were referring to?
Not necessarily. I'm thinking more about just the traffic and operations specifically.
That's what I repeat my interest in.
So to clarify, that, that requirement, special condition, came from, as a result of comments from the FAA for a non-aeronautical use of the airport. Since this is Arrow, they didn't have that same level or type of concern. So that we, that, that's why it didn't get, that's why it's not in this one.
Got it.
There are, it was an environmental basis, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So my, to clarify, my, my understanding is typical process, which this is likely to follow, when the lease is, when you're considering offering the lease, there is an opportunity of public comment. That's it. There is then no opportunity, there's no formal opportunity of public comment. The lease awarded, negotiations on these details, for building permits, none of that has a requirement for public hearing or public comment, correct?
Building permits do not have a public notice component to them.
Right.
Now, anytime that a lease is amended, public notice goes out.
Right. Yeah. Oh, when it's extended as well. Yes.
Yes. Terms of the lease change, including whether the, you know, the term in years or if something is added or removed, or a special provision is added or removed, that is subject to the public notice process.
Okay.
It's modified by the lease agreement.
Okay.
Or is a public notice process.
So if it's modified from the, the outline of the lease requirements at the beginning of the process?
Correct.
Okay. Right. Thank you. And just one other technical question. I'll move to Deborah. So you did mention the stream that crosses the first part of the parcel there. So what, what statutory rule, what rules are you following when you consider impacting the stream? Because I, is it municipal code, which does have a set of rules and requirements around stream setback? Or are you, are they considered zoning and therefore can be ignored? And there's something else you follow instead?
So typically for any sort of application, it goes through a committee review internally within DOT. We do have environmental specialists on staff and they would be the ones to weigh in on that.
Okay. So it doesn't, it wouldn't take, take into account any municipal requirements? Understood. But any other state-owned land within Girdwood or anywhere in the municipality does take that into account. This is just special.
Airports are different, yes.
Yeah. And, and just, just to clarify the situation, Birkwood currently, is that state-owned?
Yes.
Right. So although it's managed by the municipality, it's owned.
It's not.
That's right. He was intent to manage it, but they're not yet. So Merrill Field is, is municipally managed. Was it municipally owned?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Deborah?
Hi, Mike. Thank you. Just trying to gather my, make this complete here is that, I think it's, I'm just a little overwhelmed by all the comments and the questions. And I think they're great that, but really they hasn't changed my feelings or my opinion. So that's all I would give you right now is just my opinion. And that is it. This is, it's just the wrong place. It, there's just, the airport has exceeded already the capacity of noise, traffic, air pollution. And I think regardless where you live in the community, this is just a wrong business. It doesn't, that just, the community just does not need. We do not want to support this. We do not want to be, be in a situation where we all read about what, you know, happened in Juneau and they're just so happy there that they have at least one day a week where they do not hear any helicopters. So I know there's not a comparison to Juneau, to Girdwood because of, you know, our seasonal operations, but we haven't heard actually from Silverton if this is going to be a seasonal only like CPG is, or year-round like Alpine Air, which is super heavily trafficked. And there is no other community in the state that has an airport that is located in the densely populated neighborhood, residential neighborhood. That's my opinion. Thank you. I appreciate the time. Just say that.
Thank you, Deborah. So coming back to our role here, I think we have, we have something in front of us, the letter. And I've heard at least two things were shipped actually wrong, which we would want to amend if we're going to go forward with this. My sense is we have two different community, two different conversations going on here. One is between us and the municipality, which is what this letter addresses. And the other is between the community, various parties include, and maybe the municipality itself, which is a slightly different conversation. So this letter really addresses this for, we can't act, we can't act by ourselves. We can only ask the municipality to act on our behalf, and that's what this letter does. So I'm just asking basically the, the will of the body here of do we pursue this path today? Or should we delay it? Or should we just abandon it? What would you like to do now?
This is Brianna. I, to address, I feel like there were the two clear asks from the community in the room and online that have been very prescriptive and before and after all the questioning. So thank you for all of your patience and respectful commentary. I feel like this is the ask to the municipality. It's addressed to them and we could make not, not pass it the way it's written tonight, but pass it in principle. But then separately, we need to ask, do the two asks of the community here in a, in a separate letter. And they might not happen at the same time. Maybe the community ask is first because that is what they're asking for with a meeting with DOT and the airport. That's not necessarily a letter. So I'm happy to hear other members, or we could even take a recess for 10 minutes if there's more people in the room that want to suggest something.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest a, I'm going to suggest a 10-minute recess. I think I need to process, think through it.
That's fine, I too.
Objection? Let's take 10 minutes. Thank you.
I am able to fast follow up questions for you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Because I have 20 hours.
Yeah.
We're ending recess and coming back into order. Can you, can you finish conversations, please? We're coming back. Okay. Those in the room, if you can, if you need to continue conversation, take it outside and we'll get back to, get back onto the record. It's nine thirty-one. We're back in recess. We're still on item number ten, which is GBOS letter to the municipality of Anchorage regarding development at Gerwood Airport. I'm gonna summarize where I think we are. I think we have, we have a letter drafted, which is communication with the municipality. Basically asking the municipality to, to clarify what their position is with regard to, to development of Gerwood Airport and the situation of our zoning code and our comprehensive plan, one of the other things we've done locally. Separately, we have a discussion which is, I think, has started tonight, with both between the community and local property owners and DOT, and we will bring in other parties as well. I think that's a separate discussion. I don't want to stop that discussion. I just want to put a pin in that for the moment and just see what we want to do with this letter. So I heard, some thoughts from you, Rihanna.
I did have some thoughts. You're finished for now?
Yeah, you wanted to just finish.
Before the break and I, and it was great to have a few minutes to think about it and, read through the letter earlier. So I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and reflecting on, all of the months of meetings regarding the hotel on the airport proposal. So I think this language is appropriate for the recipients that we, we do know and get along with at the muni, with the municipal staff with, and that's with the corrections that were noticed in the room that we could go through. That's all I have right now. And I already moved it and it's been seconded. So we're still in discussion.
Okay. So what I'd heard in terms of if somebody wants to propose this amendment to the letter, in the third paragraph, it says, however, the lease was recently issued. I think the term there, the term would be a lease was offered. Instead of issued, was recently offered. So we'd replace the word issued with offered. And then the, penultimate line, penultimate sentence, that paragraph. So one line up from the bottom of that paragraph. Lease was awarded last month, again, was offered last month to a, and then we would strike out Colorado based and just say heavy skiing business. So that would be three changes. The word offered at the beginning of the paragraph and near the end to replace issued and awarded respectively, and then strike the phrase Colorado base.
So moved on the three edits in that paragraph.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're just limiting ourselves to that amendment. Is there any, any discussion on the amendment? Seeing a hearing, any, so move to a vote on the amendment. Do this by roll call.
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman?
Yes.
David Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion amendment passes five zero.
Okay. So now I think we fixed the factual inaccurate letter. Again, is there any one discussion on the letter? Jennifer, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I, I am now a little more convinced that the, maybe time is of the essence on this. However, I do feel like the letter's a little rushed. And so I wanted to just throw out the possibility that, you and I work on it a little bit. If, if the will of the body is to pass this forward, that we, go with that option of, I believe, we edit it a little bit and then, and then run it past the board again, to see if there are any objections. In particular, I think there were things like, just, just a couple phrasing and editing tweaks that I'd like to, but primarily clerical.
You want to propose that as a, as an amendment to our motion? So instead of sending it as is, having one more round of revision?
Yes, please.
So here is second. Is, first of all, is it clear what we're, so the idea, instead of sending the letter as is, we will have one more editing revision, to perhaps change the tone slightly. And then we will bring it back to the, the body, not for a vote, but we will do what we've done before of, when it's ready, we will send it to everybody. We then open a twenty-four hour period of reconsideration. So if it doesn't meet what people want, then there's the opportunity to come back and discuss it again.
We just, we just went through that, like two months.
Yeah, we've done that a few times as well. Okay. So it's been, the motion has been made and seconded.
It's not been seconded.
It hasn't been seconded. Sorry. It's been made. Would anyone like to second that?
Motion Jennifer made.
Jennifer made the motion to, rather than, when we vote tonight, rather than it goes, it gets sent, there's one more opportunity to, to edit it and then bring it back to the body for, reconsideration. And then twenty-four hours after that, if there is no reconsideration, it would be sent.
I will say that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I don't know if this belongs in discussion of the amendment or the main item. I don't support the aggressiveness of the three bullets at the end. And, they're pretty bold statements that I'm not sure have bearing in precedence or case, or you know, whatever the right legal terms are. I would support asking for clarification from the municipality, on the jurisdictional boundaries between the DOT and the municipality, and reference appropriate case law where it's been tested so that we understand the landscape versus being, this is just overly aggressive for me. And, you know, we haven't done the research on the codes that Britain has referenced, or really truly understood the statutes and how they are. So if anything, I think we should ask for clarification so that we understand, what's going on. Just like they're talking about this speed limit. It's like, we can't have an opinion on whether the speed limit should be changed because we don't actually understand the way that DOT relates to the road. And so I think we need to understand the way the municipality relates to this, where there's precedents around the state and, and as for that clarification, rather than say, we know what, the way it should be, and we're demanding that you enforce, an interpretation that we haven't truly researched. It's quite too wordy, but like, I'm struggling to find, the words to characterize my disagreement.
Right, Brian.
And I offer, Kelly, if I was following you correctly, would you be in agreement where just above the, the three bullet points? You know, right now it says GBOS is respectfully requesting the following actions from the municipality. Could we just switch that to requesting the following clarifications from the municipality? Would that give, would that, give you a reason to support this?
Yeah, I think and softening, you know, asking for clarifications on whether or not these types of requests are impossible, or whatever. But yes, clarification and softening of, of the language in the three bullet points. And so for me, I'm okay with, voting on this again, but I'd actually prefer that it come back to the meeting rather than do it in the email where we're, where we're not involved in the community, where we're not discussing. For me, this twenty-four hour thing and that, that I'm not comfortable with. So I think softening it up to ask for clarification and information from the municipality to help us understand the landscape, and an actual review in a meeting would be my preference.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you asking for, the municipality share their legal analysis? Because my understanding is they have done legal analysis on this, this question.
Yeah.
Not specifically for those.
So yeah, let's get, let's get the understanding. Cause I'm not sure we can legally ask for these things. And, and you know, we have statutes, we have case law that's been tested. So.
Well, that's the problem is it hasn't been tested.
Okay. My understanding is it has, but again, there we go. We're not experts on this. And so before we have an opinion, I would like to see us ground ourselves in an understanding that, that grounds the opinion that we're allowed to have and keeps the spirit of collaboration, rather than.
Call, I'm sorry, just to clarify, collaboration with who?
DOT.
Okay. Cause this letter isn't to DOT.
No, I know, but it's saying.
We can't do.
It's saying we want mom and dad to come in.
We don't have any choice. We can, if we don't ask, we won't get.
Which is why I think we need to ask for clarification to determine if we have options here.
So we would be asking for a legal analysis. I think that requires, I think what you're asking for is to, is to postpone this until a later, that's what it sounds like.
Well, I'm just saying, if we go to the municipality, I want to go for understanding and legal analysis and education. And as a result, that totally changes what I believe this letter should be asking for. And I don't think that's a twenty-four hour review. I think that's in a good discussion and follows the next meeting.
Right. So I, I think you are asking for a postponed, because what you're asking for, we can't do now. We've, through the mechanism that.
Yeah.
Is currently out. So we still have a, an amendment which was, which Jennifer moved and, right, seconded, which is to go through, one further edit, then bring it back, add a twenty-four hour reconsideration window, and then act on it. That's what's in front of us now. We could vote on that or we can, yeah, I think we should either vote on it or withdraw that.
I'm comfortable voting.
Okay.
On the motion on the table.
So unless anyone has an objection, let's vote on the amendment that's on the table. To change our process to the, to be the one more edit, then twenty-four hours of reconsideration. So that's what's in front of us as an amendment. Will you do a roll call?
Yes. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman?
No.
Jeff Wingard?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion amendment motion passes forward.
Thank you. So now we have the, now we have it in front of us. We have an amended motion. Jennifer, do you want to speak to the amended motion?
Actually, I, I have a process, comment. Sorry. I really do apologize. This is terrible timing, but I, I am flying out like right about now. So I have to leave. I apologize.
Do, do, can we, do you want to move to a vote now? And then perhaps you could have your vote recorded?
No, that's okay. I'll go with the will of the body.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more comments on the?
Clarification?
Yes.
Are we on the main motion?
Yes, we're now on the main motion.
Okay, thank you.
As amended.
Right.
So any more comments on the main motion? Okay. So we now have four people who can vote. I think we should move forward to a roll call vote.
Thank you for clarifying exactly what we're voting.
Got it. So what we are voting on is to send this letter with, one additional revision to soften the language a little. When Jennifer and I have revised it, we will send it to Margaret. We will then send it to everybody. And at that point, there is a twenty-four hour clock that starts. Anyone who voted, assuming it passes, anyone who voted in favor can basically say they're not comfortable with the letter. They wanted to bring it back to the whole body. So that would then suspend it and then we discuss it again next meeting. So it's kind of a conditional postponement, or conditional acceptance.
And then to, so to give it a chance with the option to drive the postponement if the final letter.
Effectively, yes, yes. So any one person can ask for that, but ask for that reconsideration. And you do need a second from somebody else on the body. So two of you.
On the prevailing side.
Well, the person who asked it on the prevailing side, anyone else can second.
And if you vote no, you can't have an opinion on the condition of the letter.
If you vote no and it passes, then technically you wouldn't get, you wouldn't be able to withdraw. However, I'm sure plenty of anybody could be persuaded to support it as a matter of principle. So, somebody else could perhaps do that on your behalf. Okay. Exactly what we're doing. We'll be voting on now. Okay. Let's go to a roll call. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Brian Burnett?
Yes.
Kelly Ockman?
I guess I could do a yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Motion as amended passes four zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This discussion is going to continue. I think we should bring, bring back this item to the next. Yes, sorry.
Just real quick before we wrap up, no matter what happens, if this parcel gets developed or not, I do think while we have DOT here is, a strong consideration needs to be taken in about the two thirty-six inch culverts at the first driveway on Mount Hood. And they need to be looked at for redesign with the development of that thirteen condo, condo hangar down there that has pushed more water through that neighborhood than more than ever. And we redesigned and rebuilt the passage at Mount Hood. And so, those culverts are old. We've had, we had a flood event last October and really maximized those culverts out. So, to protect that neighborhood and those residents along that creek, a redesign of those should happen no matter what happens in the long run. Just want to share that.
Thank you. Steve, do you want?
Is there still gas to make just?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, if you want to follow up on just, we've, we've dealt with the letter side, but if there's something else you want to say, about the main topic, please go ahead. Cause I was about saying we are going to be discussing this again at our next meeting.
Thanks.
See the other broader.
He is here though. Great.
Good.
And again, this is Steve Alves. And thanks again for having this whole discussion, everybody, really. A lot of the talk here has been as if this parcel H will be developed. And we, again, as a group of almost a hundred, we're, we're making the proposal that this should not be developed by anybody. We're not just talking helicopters. It should remain as it's been for forty-five years. And this, that's what Senator Geese is asking for as well. It's just that the Holy Spirit rescinded. And I have a quick question about that Gerwood Airport plan. It was said that it's from two thousand and five, but it's still the active plan. Is that correct? Because there's a clear statement in there and I don't know if you've seen Senator Geese's letter, but it talks about helicopter operation. It'd all be at the north end of the airport. Boom. I mean, so, it's just something that we hope is, is addressed. I don't see any imperative necessarily and why that has to be ignored. And then a quick question on environmental things. Is noise studies, you know, so close to people's houses, does that, fall under FAA environmental type, things? Or is that, where does that come in?
You're going to have to defer to that one too.
Okay. But we can get a justice surgeon. And then I also wanted to recognize Mr. Goldberg, Britain Goldberg. I've talked to him on the phone a few times. He's always been really helpful. And I just wanted to say that. I appreciate you. You give me information real quick and it's always accurate. One thing we're also, we're hearing a lot about is certain statutes, you know, number, number, dot, number. And I'm sure they're a hundred percent right. And I just want to remind us all here, and I'm hearing it from GBOS a lot, but, none of the statutes talk about the human impact. I, I don't know where the human impact, you know, we're not, if, if we turn it over to AI, then it goes straight to statutes. And it, it just applies it real nice. But somewhere in there, I know you guys are human and we are too. Somewhere in there, it'd be the human impact of this. And I'm, I'm sure you've all walked it. I know, I know Mr. Goldberg walked. And there's, there's absolutely no way helicopters can operate quietly in there. And as far as one takeoff and one landing a day, that's, that's tough to, it's a tough one to take, or a tough one to believe. So again, I'm just urging, you know, human consideration. This Senator Diesel's trying to work the commissioner up. Thanks again for being here. Thanks for letting me give some more comments.
So I got. Thank you. I'll just say one, I'm going to say one last comment on this, which is, the purpose of zoning code is to promote the public health, safety and welfare of the community's residents. So that's kind of, the P, one piece of least municipal code that I think we can stand behind. That's what it's for. It's, that's why, one of the reasons we want to make sure it's actually followed where it can be. Okay. We are going to be discussing this again in future meetings and we have a process for dealing with that letter. I'm going to move on now to item thirteen, which I think we can deal with very quickly. Item number thirteen, which we could act on tonight. Thank you, everybody. Is a change. The textman changed comprehensive plan. It basically changes the status of five hour road. If you could continue your conversations outside, well, thank you.
Everybody get to clear the room.
Um, this just changes the status of uh High Tower Road currently under the, under uh the plan counted as industrial. A commercial collector road, which means designed for a speed limit of forty-five miles an hour, various other things. Um, this is just a simple change to make it to residential, which is thirty miles an hour, et cetera. So. Um, it's not going to change the speed limit. It's just about the way that it's designed and any future work. So it's more or less a um. It's more or less a sort of clerical change. But uh I would suggest that we uh, we either. Support this or we uh issue a letter of non-objection. Um, and again, comments are due by the fourteenth, so we can't act on this. Before our next meeting. We have to act on it now, or our next meeting will be too late.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, this is Brianna. I read through that, was it A O or N A I M? But it it made sense that they, for less work and time and acreage for all the roads that were on that. It makes sense to update by changing the category of this road. So I'm into. Do whatever the board wants, which is support it versus non-objection. It's the same amount of our time and effort, but. It affects our our main road up there, so. Street, road, whatever you want to call it. So I'll support it. I can move that. I'll move the motion, make the motion to support the MOA planning department case.
Uh, should we make, should we support it um conditional on land use? Or should we support it and get it sent to land use so we can put in any language changes?
Uh, based on prior uh all of our processing Girdwood, I would propose conditioned on land use passing.
Also good.
Keep with the routine.
And this would be a simple letter rather than a resolution.
Letter.
Okay.
Update to a letter.
Letter of support or letter of non.
Support.
Okay, yeah. So we um, the proposal is letter of support, subject to L U C. Um, do you have a second?
Yeah, second.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry, mister. Any further discussion? Fine, go ahead.
Um, I remember hearing in previous conversations about about this road. And a couple of us have brought up the uh, uh, the concept of one way to also um be able to do some. Traffic calming, if you will, is um by changing the the name of the road from Elie Ska Highway to Elie Ska Boulevard. And there was something in code, because it was classified as it was, it couldn't be like a street. It had to be the highway. Ends up by um by changing um the status of the Elie Ska Highway. It could give us the opportunity to also rename it as to Boulevard or Avenue or. Something like that that does not designate or doesn't bring up visions of highway speed.
This is for High Tower Road, right? This is High Tower, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, this is, this is High Tower, but your point is valid that it would still be a collector.
Hmm hmm.
Um, and uh, but it would change from industrial collector to residential collector. And that makes some, the only thing I can see that's different is um some of it. That's all right, we all get it.
We're still out at the airport. I'm sorry.
Um, the, the only, the main differences are in the way that it's designed, whether it's designed for higher speeds. I think there's wider um roadways and things like that, but um. Actually, there is maybe a bigger question, and I think there is. One of the things, the comprehensive plan is going through all the streets and working at it and reviewing those. I think this is a very simple technical change.
And will this have a impact on how vehicles are allowed to park along High Tower?
Don't believe so. I don't believe it made any changes at all to parking. There's a um, there's a, there's some summary, two summary tables in the design criteria. And the only differences I can find were design speed and width of roadway.
Just a point of clarification. You would, the the process would be to draft the letter. And then the letter in its actual full form would go to L U C for approval. So that would give us and the community an opportunity to actually. Do the research and, you know, make sure, and then the letter will clarify. So. Yeah, some of these things would fall out in the letter writing. I'm guessing that L U C would be a chance to review it.
I I was thinking the letter was just simply, you know, support this project period and nothing more detailed, but we we could do something with a bit more background.
Well, yeah, for me, a letter would explain, you know, in the spirit of whereas in Air Force, I can't imagine a letter without seventeen whereas in Air Force.
Typically, typically, the letter wouldn't have whereas.
No, I'm kidding. I I mean, the spirit of, right? Like, you know, generally, we put the justification in for land use to have an opinion. On whether they support it, they're going to need the education that would quite naturally be laid out.
So it sounds like we have a volunteer for writing the letter. That's excellent.
Because I'm not, I'm not educated.
Do you want to, do you want to write that with me before next, before the uh?
When's the land use meeting?
Uh, seventh, I believe.
Um.
We'd have to have it ready the week before, so basically end of next week.
Yeah, I have some time this week. I did work on it.
Okay.
Thank you both. It should be free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think you have another week.
April fourteenth. Oh, fourteenth is land use. Yes. Oh, sorry.
It's the first of the day.
Land use is too late.
Yeah. Oh.
Because seventh is, yeah, the first Monday.
So it won't go to land use.
Okay, back to.
Thank you. That clarifies it. So in that case, I think it's an action for we can do.
Okay, I'll take my motion, rescind the part about um contingent on the land of vote. Because it's time sensitive.
The the easiest thing to do would be to make a non objection, because we have the letter written, and it's just, we don't get.
Right.
Then at least we have.
That makes, that makes the most sense in this case, so. Um, and this, this email was only last week, so uh I would have moved to. Um, write a letter of non objection regarding the comp plan next amendment.
Okay. So um, let's do this properly. So if you rescind the motion, are you okay with rescinding the original motion? Good. So first, the the second also agrees. So now the new motion is to write a letter of non objection, send a letter of non objection. Do we have a second? Thank you. Um, any further discussion? No. I'm going to do this by assent, I think, uh so we can be quick. Any disagreement? Okay, we're going to write a long, letter of non objection by assent. We're about two minutes away from uh our meeting ending. Um, I would entertain a motion to give us ten more minutes.
Moved, so moved. Ten more minutes.
Thank you. Wait here a second. Yeah, any objection? No, continuing to time past ten. Okay. Um, we've got items eleven, twelve, and fourteen. So jump straight to item eleven. Uh, discuss MOA GBOS joint quarterly leader meeting.
I put the agenda from the last. In the packet, just as a reminder of where things were.
I think we have a couple of issues that will come up from that um summary of legal opinions. We clearly have some discussion about the airport. Um. S T R regulation, maybe. You know, I don't know if that falls into that meeting or whether it's a, I think that's a separate discussion with either with planning and or assembly. I think we just go forward, throw it out there.
Agreed with the last statement. And maybe alcohol tax and just an update basically from our last request. And airport legal questions and any legal questions following the legal requests we've received today. Well, the answers we received today.
Yeah.
And this is new business, so um, have time at the next meeting.
And this is the meet on the third, at the end of um, April twenty-eighth, yes.
Yep, end of April. Okay.
Yeah, so I think it's mostly the items that, any follow up from the items that came up today. And we know the airport will be one of them.
Yeah. We'll confirm that with you then this meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other?
Um, let's see, so the the alcohol tax, did we get a resolution on, or did we? Get um the marijuana tax issue? Where 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 are we with that? While we're talking with them about the alcohol tax, could we include that also for the the uh childcare component, I believe?
Didn't it go to revisions with Seth Johnson?
The marijuana tax is separate. That's going, that goes through the the A sport.
Oh.
And that's, they recommend something, they recommend spending to the uh assembly. So I haven't, I don't know where that currently stands.
So should we ask?
We can, yeah, we can, we can, we can check into that.
Yeah.
One thing to keep about in mind with these meetings is that if you want us to make sure, because some of these things are assembly side versus uh staff. And so um we should be clear, if we want to invite assembly to address them, we may just need to get them to those meetings.
Yes.
Hmm. Because administration may not be handling them.
Or for those meetings who are effective, if we'd be laser focused on what the city manager, you know, what the. I don't have the right vocabulary, but if it's not the assembly, you know what I mean?
With the municipal staff handle.
Municipal staff, we can do a lot with them. So maybe rather than pull the assembly in and make it too big for a meeting. Actually be more laser focused to make sure that the agenda is fit for purpose for the, for the audience, is what I'm hearing. Um, it's kind of a push.
Yeah, that is a goal, definitely.
Yeah, so like rather than pull it simply in, let's just be sure that what we put on the agenda is within their authority to. Influence or decide or whatever else.
So in some cases, what happens is the um, is the assembly, sorry, the the administration can sort of. Either do some things or answer questions and clarify things, and then it requires some reaction if there's a change. There's some of this is about finding out what. And then if there's a change required, it can be supported by someone. Uh, but often it's uh two questioner going through the assembly to do that. And, you know, that will often be with the, the administration.
Thank you, Kyle, for reminding us that.
I I, unless it's something, that's some other uh at at particular topic, let's move on. Um, so twelve, item number twelve, uh agenda item L U C twenty-five oh three. Zero four. Uh, this is the um, this is administrative site plan review for um. For the Spennell Cabin Development. Um, again, this is four eighteen. I, for some reason, they thought we had, our meeting was four fourteen.
Ours, oh, the first month, first day was a Tuesday.
Because the first is Tuesday, that's what's confused.
So that's almost the whole week, yeah.
So it can't be before the fifteenth, yes. Okay, so again, we have a, we have a mismatch here. Um.
Oh, this is due?
Because this is due, the director's decision is four eighteen, so the decision would be made on four eighteen. If we want any in, any input, we have to do that now.
Well, I'll ask the body, since the chair can't make the motion, we either, we could, one of us could move to put this into old business and go back to old business, or we just don't say anything about this. No comment. For their site plan review application. But there's more public process after this?
No.
No?
This is the only public process. The only public process is uh you can make comments on it, and then the, the the director or the designer makes the decision.
So he could individually make comments for that.
Yeah. Is there a land use meeting before? Land use is on the fourteenth, we just said.
Yes, and yes, there is.
So land use could make a statement on this if there's an opinion.
It might be new business for them.
No.
No, we introduced it.
That's right, that's right. I heard it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
But they would typically ask us to make comment, because they don't have.
Right.
What was the discussion at land use?
Um. What? Yeah, not, not much. It was uh, you know, um widely um compared to birdhouse development, if you will. And um, but we're, you know, and and there were some concerns brought up about, you know. What the, what the price is going to be, and there were going to be any conditions placed on them, if they're just going to end up with dark homes or. S T Rs, which is a good question. And and there was also, you know, and and they can, the comparison to the birdhouses is kind of interesting. Um, the interesting thing about when you look at the birdhouse development, all of the entrances in the birdhouse development face each other. This one, they all face out.
I think it's a very different beast.
Yeah, it is a very different beast. It, but still it has the density that the birdhouse is brought to Girdwood, but it's a, it is a very different beast.
So one of the um, this is an example of a sort of project where. Uh, one of the policies you see in a lot of other similar communities is um something like this, you could build as is. Or you could uh use density bonus. So basically, you could build five more units, say, I don't know what the exact numbers. But let's say you could build four or five more units. But if you were to use that option, some of them would have to be. Uh, tied to being primary residency or lower cost or something else. So you you trade off. The additional um entitlements to the, to a private developer in exchange for things which are beneficial to the community.
Yeah.
And that's not something that we can uh, we have the power to do at the moment, but that's one of the policies that we should be pushing for soon. Um, or something similar to that. So I guess this is an example again of maybe a missed opportunity. This kind of thing could be done in a better way, that's more beneficial. So it's an interesting discussion.
To this, though, if land use didn't have crazy, you know, the community speaking didn't have. A lot of juice behind it, for lack of a better expression. I'm not, I don't feel compelled that we have any opinion here. I, you know. Let it go through the process.
Margaret? Well, it is, uh, it was an introduction item at land use, and they normally request the GBOS handle the business end of it. So um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that they really were considering it also. It's not something that the petitioner was required to come to. So, you know, there wasn't anybody driving for any ask. So this would be definitely something coming from the community out. I think it seems to me like the appropriate. Thing, given the amount of time that there is, is to request that people who have interest make their comments to the director. Or into planning as indicated there, and that would probably be a more valid statement of what people are actually thinking. Than something that would come from either body at this point.
Yeah, I like that, because I don't think we have the time or depth or input to get to anything useful.
Well, you individually might want to say something too. It sounds like there are some ideas here among the group who are more focused on some of the broader concerns, but. I just don't think that you can expect the land use would have taken all of this on at that moment.
And thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Right. We have two minutes left, so.
Yeah, I don't think there's, it sounds like there's no, no activity. So we will, we probably won't bring it back. It would be too late. Um, last thing is Forest Fair. Uh, I'll tell us quick for. I did suggest we could do it earlier.
It's right here.
We are uh starting the permit process. Uh, we're well into it, so uh we wanted to get Karen on the agenda. Forest Fair tonight, just to introduce it, and then next month, probably just confirm the letter uh non objection to a fee waiver. Um, for, and also for the fair itself uh at the next meeting. So if you had any questions tonight, Karen is available to answer, but. That's what we're working through, and she's still, she's getting all the work done on the permitting.
Just a little clarification. I thought previously we actually um, we we said fee waiver for several years. Has that now run out?
No, still alive.
Okay.
We do want, the resolution is there, but the fair, really the non objection to the fair itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Is is the key thing, but we always make sure to let the community know that the fees have been waived through a resolution. So the body always changes, so they should know that, so.
There'd be a reiteration of that. Yes. Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, there isn't anything right now that I wanted to add at this time. Um, right now, most of our procedures and policies will be similar to what we had last year. It is going to be the fiftieth annual Girdwood Forest Fair. And it is also overlapping with the Fourth of July. So we are taking extra care to um make sure we have. Um, extra resources where we need them and uh and are trying to plan for a wonderful, safe community celebration.
Uh, thank you. Question for.
Yeah.
Karen, um, are you expecting any uh, any impact from the new um alcohol ID requirements um? Uh, on the, on the forest fair and the operation in the beer garden?
That is interesting. I don't know if we've addressed that yet. Our policy has always been, uh, to check every ID as it comes in to the, the beer garden itself. So if we'll check with the alcohol board to see if there are additional procedures that are required now beyond that.
I overheard a meeting last week by the assembly and that was brought up and I feel like I heard them say events were not, certain events were not in, written into that law, but they were just wait and let it sink in.
We already do that.
Yeah, it's already been done.
Yeah.
My favorite volunteer opportunity.
It's a good point though. We may want to get the word out that even you old timers that believe that we know you and know you well, the ID checkers no longer have the ability to waive the requirement.
After ten ten.
I know. I, I, can I just ask one quick question? Karen, do you know how much money you saved last year by not having that additional tax?
Oh my gosh, I want to take that one off.
I'm going to ask you next time. That's a warning. Thank you.
Um, you know, it was about five thousand dollars, at least five thousand dollars.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Um, I hear the, I heard a move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn second.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.